Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Select Board Meeting for Monday, August twenty-sixth. We're being, the meeting being held here in the Land Use Room. Um, and being held in the hybrid fashion. Um, in attendance tonight is myself, Jason Brown Chairman, Vice Chairman Diane Gale, Clerk Doug Moglen, Chief Administrative Officer Nicole Park Parker, Assistant C A O Nadine Signoni, and Secretary Lisa Anderson is down in your office. Um, we start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Mister Anderson, would you lead? If we could, we'd like to start the meeting with a moment of silence for Irene Jemmy. She worked in the town's clerk's office. She's passed away, so if we could start with a moment of silence. Thank you all. Next, we are going to open the meeting for public comments. Is there anyone in the audience? Mister Hanson.
Sorry, I didn't mean to say this. We're Hanson, one fifty-three North Landing Road, Chair of the South Lake Agricultural Commission. I just want to take a quick minute to give you some highlights about our Open Farm Day we developed, which, despite the rain, was a phenomenal success. I just can't. We had longer hours this year, so we had more volunteers. So we have a total of forty-eight volunteers this year. Uh, five National Honor Society kids and nine Big Y employees. And if you went around and saw the Big Y employees with gray t-shirts and the Big Y logo and, you know, volunteer. The most visitors was a hundred and seventy-one at Climb You Stables, they have an indoor track. Uh, but they were doing pony rides in the rain and they did, they got some bookings for lessons and people coming up, so that's good. Hundred and forty-two of West Wing Acres doing, again, hay rides in the rain. But people were, people wanted to do it, so, uh, there was a hundred and eight at Second Eden, which is the newest farm in town. Uh, they, we kind of put them on the map. They haven't. It'll be, they didn't, they didn't even have a sign until, until Farm Day. And they got twelve orders for Thanksgiving turkeys. There were ninety-nine at Arnold's and people are fascinated by Tibet Club. They're in a conversation, so it's delightful, you know, the stars, surprise, surprise, she loves. And now sixty-eight at Bramble Scoop, which was new this year. Many of you know, they had a little, you know, question about whether to include somebody at Bramble, but, Uh, there are sixty-eight there and three groups that we know of heard of Farm Day at the Bramble Scoop and came to Southwick. So, one special success is a collaboration with Calabrese Farm and Delicious. Delicious Truck was over there handing out ice cream. Diane was the scooper.
I was the handler.
And they were giving away ice cream and grilled corn and they went through a hundred and sixty beers of corn.
At least, at least, and the peach ice cream was phenomenal.
Peach ice cream, I never, I thought there were chocolate chips in there, but it turned out to be frozen blueberries. And then, um, just a quick, uh, note for myself. So that morning, it was raining and we're all checking our phones, you know, seeing if the rain's kind of let up. And we're trying to see, is anybody showing up at any of the farms? And so I personally got eighty text messages. With updates and with questions and, you know, who, which volunteers are there and which site is seeing any, any visitor, so, um, again, just, we are just so pleased and so pleased on behalf of the farmers. And we will see you August seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. Thank you.
There anyone else in the audience that would like to make a public comment? Anybody on Zoom that would be interested in making a public comment? Seeing no takers, we are going to move on to the next item on our agenda, which is going to be a public dog hearing for Miss Lori Fijal of twenty-four Birchwood Road, Southlake, Mass. Going to be, uh, opening the public hearing, with a motion to open the hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Is there a hearing notice to read, Mr. Chairman?
There, uh, there's the dog hearing notice, but, so, okay, this was regarding a dog complaint concerning the dogs owned by Miss Lori Fijal and houses at twenty-four Birchwood Road, Birchwood Road. Nature of complaint, the alleged violation is of Mass General Law, Chapter one forty, Section one fifty-seven concerning nuisance or dangerous dogs, with an order for remedial action, appeal, or violation of order in Town of Southwick, Chapter sixty-nine, sections including but not limited to nine, eleven, and twelve, and sixteen, animal control bylaws concerning dangerous potentially dangerous dogs. Please see the attached laws, complainants to the A C O, Town of Southwick. Um, and it is dated for, for, be occurring today at six oh five P M. And at that point, I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Motion to open the public hearing.
Okay, well, Jason, I.
Doug Moglen, I.
Ready? Come on up, ma'am.
Animal Control Officer Ruth Bennett, Southlake, County Southlake, Massachusetts. Okay, this has been an ongoing issue, um, just to briefly go over. Uh, March fourth, we had a.
Anyone who's going to testify at a public hearing, or at a dog hearing, I see.
Very good. Um, raise your hand. Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so, March. All right, March fourth, we had a dog versus dog wherein, um, Ms. Whitehead was walking her dog by Ms. Fijal's house. And the dog from there came out and attacked her dog, causing injury. Um, I have just little tidbits from the reports that, that I did. Um, Ms. Fijal stated that she knew her dog jumped the fence and that she spoke with Ms. Whitehead after the incident. Fijal stated that the dog has never done, had gone after another dog before. She stated that her dog is not current on rabies vaccination that is also not licensed. Uh, Fijal was advised that apparently this is not the first time the dog has gone after anyone. And she admitted that this has in fact happened before. Um, at that one, she was issued a verbal warning for unlicensed, unvaccinated, and roaming. She was told to license her dog before the end of that quarantine period. That didn't happen. She called me later the day on three-six and said she didn't believe this has happened. She said she didn't believe it was actually, that it actually happened, and she's leery of people making complaints. I said, I do have pictures of the injuries. She said that Whitehead could have a vet friend that will make up a bill of all kinds of charges. And I advised, uh, advised her this, that would be a civil issue. I got a statement from Ms. Whitehead who said what had happened, um, that was included in the report. Now, I told her, Ms. Fijal, to quarantine her dog for the ten-day period. I gave her a quarantine form as well as an actual, conditions of quarantine. Okay, that is this part. This is conditions of quarantine. This tells you exactly why your dog is being quarantined. It tells you exactly what you are to do under a quarantine, which includes your pet is not to leave your property. Your pet is to be on a leash for bathroom breaks. No one who does not reside at your house is allowed to have access with your pet. Should your pet become very, become ill for any reason, you have to notify me. It goes on and on and on. I then get a call on the thirteenth, um, on three-twelve, sorry, um, that from Ms. Whitehead. She said that she and her son were driving down the road and that Ms. Whitehead knew the dog was under quarantine and yet the dog was out and about. Um, so she asked, I guess her son had asked the neighbor who was on the property, the dog was currently located, if they were watching the dog. They said, no. Ms. Whitehead's son was yelling for Fijal to come out of the house, knock, 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 nobody's answering. She had absolutely nothing, no knowledge, their dogs were out. Um, uh, she stated that she was doing, quote, "Everything I can to keep the dog under control," but then it got out. I advised Fijal that the quarantine order she was sent specifically states that the dog is to be on a leash when out for bathroom breaks. Fijal completely disregarded this and was reported that the dog had been roaming at least twice in two days. She said, well, then I never got the quarantine order. And I said, at that time, she was given the oral instructions on the quarantine. And I asked, do you understand? And she said, yes. Um, I, she said, well, I, I never got the quarantine order. I said, well, if you think somebody's stealing your mail, you can certainly file a complaint and we will certainly investigate that. But the post office has not returned the letter that had the quarantine order in it, so I have no idea what to tell you. Um, I told her that further violations would be met with enforcement. And then her neighbors were advised that they were entitled to request a hearing with the Town Select Board, should they feel the need to regarding dogs' aggressive behavior towards other dogs. So at that point, she said, at the end of the quarantine period, she said, well, I'm training the dogs on a new electric fence. Okay, that's fabulous. So she was issued a, on five fourteen, she was, okay, so for that one, on three thirteen, she was issued a ticket for seventy-five dollars, never paid. On five fourteen, she was getting a written warning for unlicense because she still had not licensed the dogs back from March fourth. On five seventeen, two dogs were impounded. Her two dogs were impounded, still not licensed. So she, at that point, was given, um, a ticket for two hundred dollars, one count of roaming each. She was advised that before she got the dogs out, they were to be licensed. So she was forced to license these dogs. Okay, fine. Um, on seven twenty-four, dog versus dog, again, we had this one. However, this time, we had children involved. We had these dogs. One of the dogs came out, dog versus dog. Ms. Whitehead was with three and four-year-old children walking down the street with her dog on a leash. When this dog came out, attacked her dog. She's screaming, the kids are screaming. Ms. Fijal is doing nothing, just kind of standing there. She finally does get the dog. Ms. Whitehead is screaming because the dog's attacking her dog. So the dog jumps back out of her arms and now she's going to attack the dog again. She's screaming to a neighbor, please take my dog, please take my dog, it's a good dog, but it's being attacked, please save my dog. So the woman across the street grabs the dog, puts it in the house to save him. So now we have Ms. Whitehead screaming at three and four-year-olds, run, run, get out. Because these kids are now experiencing this trauma at watching their caretaker fending off this dog that's going after her dog. And now, she's got a call for the father of one of the people, father of one of the kids. Come here, help me. She's screaming, help me. He comes down, she's got, now, so now the woman across the street has the dog. Ms. Whitehead now is trying to get the kids out, trying to get them back to the house. Now here comes a Doberman, the Ms. Fijal has. Now, I will tell you, I'm an animal control officer. I've been a behaviorist. I've dealt with wildlife, I've dealt with animals. I have my own animal rescue for over twenty-five years. I can tell you, one dog will copy another dog. So now the little dog is out there, okay, running around again. Now here comes Doberman. Now the Doberman is showing aggression. The Doberman will follow what this little dog is doing because it's in the nature of, hey, my buddy's doing this, I might as well do this too. So now, the father of this child also has to, while Ms. Whitehead is running back to the house with the kids, he's got to deal with this Doberman. So now.
Yes, I'm sorry, it sent me all the way to the other side of town, the address.
Um, so now we have the Doberman who is now being aggressive, so that the whole situation is now at an extreme level of anxiety for everyone involved. Ending stories that everything was split up. They got the, the dog back to Ms. Whitehead's house. Um, Ms. Fijal got her dogs back and was issued at that point, four hundred dollar fine, not paid. Um, she said that, she told me at one point that, oh, I've got the electric fence, we're being trained on the new electric fence. And then she says, well, the dogs are always tied up. The dogs are tied out. Why, what, what happened? You just told me you're going to do an electric fence and now you're telling me the dogs are tied out, so there shouldn't be an issue. When I went to deliver the notice for tonight, she said, well, the dogs are tied out, and she seemed very annoyed. And I said, well, what happened to the electric fence? Okay, we had an electric fence. She said, the dogs are being trained on this fence. Nope, apparently not. So now we have the dogs tied up. So she was, failed to license the dogs when she was told to license them. She failed to follow the quarantine orders twice, not once, twice, when she was advised detail by detail. Because I do this specifically because it's a stressful situation and I want you to have in hand a copy of what you are supposed to be responsible for when I say to you, you have to quarantine dog. So she has in hand, it's right there. Um, first she said a new electric fence, then she said no, that she ties them out, she can't understand. When the second incident happened, she told the officer, like, why should I do this? Why should I have to, um, I've got to find that one too. She said, why should I have to, um, quarantine the dog? We already did this, already licensed, already vaccinated. No, this is a case of the dog went after another dog. Um, I was, when the officer was there, I was able to advise Fijal that her dog wasn't to, into being quarantined for the incident for a period of ten days. She questioned why. I advised her that the quarantine was because of the attack on the other dog. She again questioned why, stating that her dog's now vaccinated, so she didn't think the quarantine was needed. Um, and I advised her again that this needs to be done. And again, she was handed in, in hand, in person, the quarantine order and the instructions. Fijal then stated that she would just put the dog on a tie-up. I said, oh, I'm telling you, the dog has to be on leash, you have to be present when the animal is out to go to the bathroom. And the reason that this is because of, we need to know what the dog is exposed to from the date of the incident through the next ten days. So we know that if the dog gets sick within that ten-day period, it's because of an exposure prior to the incident, so that in essence, the other dog has been exposed to whatever it was. And this is, again, this is all explained. Uh, she said she was just going to tie the dog out like I always do. And she was advised, no, that she's not to tie the dog out. She was advised that her dog should be on the end of a leash. Um, she said she understood the conditions of the quarantine. Um, I asked Ms. Whitehead, she said that these dogs are habitually roaming. Boston Terrier has attacked other dogs. Many of the neighbors in the area have run when they see this dog climbing the fence. I have a third statement, well, I have a statement from Ms. Whitehead, I have a statement from Mr. Barubi, and I have a third statement from a woman who did not really wish to be identified because she was afraid of retaliation. She said that, yes, there, this dog is always out and about. She said that a woman was walking a Golden Retriever by and was also attacked. This was back in, I believe, July, but I'm not a hundred percent, I may have to. Hang on, let me reference that one. The white dog at twenty-four Birchwood Road has jumped the fence and come across at us a couple of times, extremely frustrating. I work from home, early July, I saw a woman walking by my house, walking a Golden Retriever-looking dog. She was halfway past my house when she looked scared and started to run. I saw a little white dog chasing them. By the time I got to the window, the white dog had already run back to its yard and was jumping the fence back into the yard. There are a lot of children and walkers in our neighborhood. I just want this to be a safe place for all. I want this to be a safe place for all. And the woman that she was referencing, I actually found out who it was. She said, yeah, she was watching, walking her daughter's dog by the house. And then here comes this little guy, starts attacking. She starts running and she's got to get away. Um, I spoke to Mr. Barubi, I hope that's how you pronounce your name.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. On a couple of days after this, and he said his daughter was having a nightmare about being attacked by a dog. So here we are, I'm asking the board, we've got an owner who appears to have no regard for keeping her dogs under control. We have dogs, we have now two dogs who are showing aggressive behavior. We have kids in the neighborhood, three and four-year-old kids who are told to go run home because this whole melee is going on. We have, now we have a child who's had nightmares about being attacked by a dog. We have, again, we have an owner who appears that unless she's forced to license her dog, she's forced to get her dog vaccinated. She's forced to quarantine her dog, which apparently didn't matter. She's still not doing it. Now she tells me, well, the dogs are always tied up. Or somebody opened the gate, someone left the gate open. There's always a reason why her dogs are running around the neighborhood. And now I understand too that this is more than what has been documented here. So I'm asking the board for the sake of the neighborhood, for the sake of these kids in, in, that are running around the neighborhood, who can no longer run around the neighborhood. And for the sake of the safety of these animals, because I had one fall, freak, I almost hit them. Um, that we do something, and my idea is to do the, um, and I know we've done it before, the actual physical enclosure with a solid bottom wire, you know, the, the caging, ten by ten, however, we need, we need to do this, with the top. So that the dog cannot climb over, cannot dig out, and the neighborhood can have some peace and quiet again. I don't know any other way, because the dog apparently climbs the fence, or somebody lets it out, or somebody does this, somebody does that, and we have these incidents. And I don't know about you, but I had, my, when my kids were little. No, that was not a good, not a good deal. So, uh, I have Ms. Whitehead here, Mr. Barubi here. I don't know if you need to hear their statements or not.
Excuse me, ma'am.
Okay.
I'm going to hear from the other party before I ask for other statements, okay?
Um, okay, are you set with me?
I am, Mr. President.
I appreciate your attention.
Ms. Fijal, could you come on up?
It took me way down the hatch, I'm sorry.
Understandable. Could you say your name and address for the record?
Sure, Lori Fijal, twenty-four Birchwood Road.
And could you raise your right hand, please? You swear to tell the truth, the truth, and nothing but the truth?
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we heard Ms. Bennett's side, um, could you explain to us what's been going on?
Well, I did hear, so I, the, I'm going to speak on the two incidents that I know of because the, the last part of this that I heard, I had no idea. I didn't know anything about a German Shepherd or a Golden Retriever. I didn't know kids were running away from my dog. Um, I want to speak on the Doberman. The Doberman is a puppy, has never been aggressive towards anybody. Nobody. She might chase after the little one, because the little one is the lead, she's correct. But she hasn't shown any aggression to anybody. She might bark a little bit, but there is dogs all over that neighborhood, everywhere. So, as far as my little dog is concerned, he likes to hop the fence. And she's correct, I did tell her that I got a wired fence, which I did. I tried to install it. It's over my scale of knowledge. So I went back, I ordered a wireless. I also got two behavioral collars for both of them. Um, when I was talking to her, I never said that I tied the dogs out. I tied them. I asked them if I could tie the dog out when they put it in quarantine. And they told me, no, it had to be on a lead, like on a leash. So I never said I tied the dog out all the time. The dog was in his yard. And I was trying to do things to deter him from jumping the fence. So I, I have my laptop here, I can show purchases. I've spent over a thousand dollars trying to keep him in the yard. I bought a blockage for the fence, I bought another blockage for the fence. I bought the electric wired fence that I couldn't get. It was just splitting wires and this, that, and the next thing, and I can't do that. Um, spoke to my neighbor, he has the wireless, so I purchased the wireless. Unfortunately, his wireless and my wireless are knocking each other out, so we've been playing tag and trying to move it so that it was away from the front fence, away from his fence. Um, I think we've got it down, when she came to my home and I said that I was working on training, I was, with the corrective collars. I would go out there with them. If he was near the fence, I'd try to hit him. Unfortunately, when I, I don't know if he's getting it, you know, I, I think he's deterred because he doesn't like it, and then, you know, there's a situation. I, I love animals, I love dogs. I'm not trying to put anybody in any kind of danger here. He's a little Boston Terrier. He was a surrender. Before I moved to Southwick, I never had an issue with him. He didn't do anything like that. I don't know if he's overprotective of the home. Um, he seems to not like big fluffy male dogs, is what I'm gathering. He gets along great with my Doberman. I have two other dogs that my ex-husband has. He gets to go on great with them. I, I don't know what the problem is, but I can show you proof that I'm trying to do something to keep him contained. I feel really bad. I'm, I'm really sorry. I mean, I, 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 I'm not throwing my dog out there. I'm, I'm doing my best. I'm a single mom. I have a certain amount of income that I have. I'm spending a lot of money here, I'm getting fined. Getting fined left and right, and I'm just trying to do right. I don't want anybody to be hurt and I don't want anybody to be afraid of my dog. I'm not making excuses, I'm trying to make it work, and I'm trying not to take all of his freedom away from him, because that's what he's used to, so. I mean, I can, I, I don't, I don't know. If you want, I have, I can show you personal purchases, what I'm trying to do, I just, like I said, I put another block around the fence, hoping that if he can't see, and there's also something on the outside of it because he puts his paw up, and that's how he gets over.
What kind of fence is it?
It's a chain link, like a three-foot chain link. So he goes up and he puts one paw up and then he gets up and then over, so I put something kind of over the front. I wanted to see if it would work. It wasn't super expensive, so now I can order it for the rest of the fence, just to make sure. And like I said, I have the electric fence. I've been listening to him for the last week and a half, yipping every time he gets hit by it. You know, I have it on like level four, because I'm trying to keep him in the yard. I didn't bring this dog into this town knowing he was going to do stuff like this.
So, we've heard Ms. Bennett's recommendations. Is that something we'd be able to do? I mean, a three-foot fence, that, you know, Ms. Gail asked the question, I was going to ask, how big is this fence? Um, are you able to maybe put up a taller fence if that would work?
Looking into, at least, I mean, financially, I don't have money to fence my whole yard in, but at least to keep him away from the front. Maybe I can put, you know, a six-foot up along the front, at least. My neighbor has two male dogs and they go at it in between the fence all the time. They're just, but the minute, you know, if I open my gate, they won't go into each other's yard and fight with each other. They want to do it between the fence, so. Financially, I, I'm, I don't have the money to, I would love to have a six-foot stockade fence and not have to worry about this. I financially cannot afford that, I just can't. Um, I can look into at least blocking off the front, keeping the electric fence. I mean, maybe that'll do it, or I can just keep him tied up. I've been keeping him on a, a, not a leash, but a, a lead. Not all the time, because I'm trying to train him on the fence at the same time, so I got to show him the barriers, but, I mean, if this means just leaving him on his leash, on the lead in the yard, then the Doberman, I'm not worried about. First of all, she's too big, she can't jump the fence. Second of all, she has no aggression. When she did get loose that day, because when I went out to go grab him, because of the humidity, my front door didn't shut all the way, so I was kind of panicked, running to grab him. And I shut the door behind me and she pushed open the door and I'm sure you were there, when I hit the, I went out with the remote, called her name and hit the collar and she came right back. She was running down the street and she came right back. As far as I know, she, there's been no aggression with her. She's just a big doofy super energized Doberman puppy. You would think it'd be the opposite. I got a Boston, that's a maniac, and a Doberman, that's sweet as can be.
I'm not an expert, but I do have three dogs. They do learn from each other. And if it's a puppy, it's going to learn that behavior. She also said you had issues with the gate being left open.
My daughter's fifteen. My daughter's fifteen, she mowed the front lawn for me, she left the gate open.
And that can happen again.
But, I agree, I mean, we had a discussion about it, she knew what happened, I was in mess when the dogs were in. Doggy jail for the weekend, and. You know, I had a long talk with her, you gotta be really careful about closing the gate, I mean, these are things that can happen to anybody, I get it, I know, it sounds really bad. It, it's just, it's, it's, they happen, and, um. Like I said, I can show you proof that I'm trying. Everything possible to like. Deter him from doing this in my means that I have right now. I spent over a thousand dollars trying to keep him contained so far.
Like I said, you heard Ms. Bennett's recommendation. Ms. Bennett, I'm gonna, what does, are gonna closure like that cost? I'm just curious.
It depends on. How. Sturdy you get, you can go from a thousand dollars to ten thousand. But a ten by ten. Enclosure with a floor. And a top. Um, I would imagine for you. One to two thousand dollars, depending again, how you. How you do that, who does it? Um, you can either buy it free, you know, where they, you just. Put the gates together. Or you could have it customing. So I would guess around two thousand dollars.
Thank you. Was that, would that be something you could do?
Right now. I understand. I worked two and a half jobs, I had my own business, I just lost a client, I'm. Trying to recover from that, and, and. I worked twelve hour days, I mean.
And the, the directions that Ms. Bennett gave you about, I mean, she said, did she explain that? Don't put them out on a lead by your, by themselves to, to maintain. You know.
And I did, after, yes, when the, when the police came the second time and talked to me, I did ask if I could. Cause my, in my mind, the quarantine was for, because they weren't up to date on the rabies. You know, so that was why I was questioning that, and then. Again, it was the, well, is it okay if I just put him on the lead, because we know he's all, you know, vaccinated, and I didn't understand, and, you know. And I did, after. They explained it, he was on a leash every time I took him out. Until he was off quarantine, and now I've been doing a mix of either putting him on the lead, or trying to train him in the yard with the fence. And so far, that's going good, cause he doesn't even wanna go off the deck, he's scared. My only issue is that right now, I'm trying to get. The electric fence to come in before the fence in the front yard. But because my neighbor and I are on the same frequency, are, when it crosses, it blocks each other out. So I have to try to maneuver it where. It's enough, far enough away from the front fence, right now, it goes to the middle of the front yard, and my worry is if he's flying in the air. It's gonna be too late, although it'll keep hitting him well beyond. The point. He'll just keep getting zapped, and I saw, and I hate to say that, it's a horrible way to say it, but. I watched it happen the other day, he got on the other side of it and just didn't know what to do, he was just yipping and crying, and I had to call him back. So I'm still trying to like. We're still trying to finagle it where he has enough room for his dogs to be able to, you know, do their thing, and enough room for mine, and at least keeping it away from the front fence, so.
Is your backyard fenced in, or the whole yard?
The whole yard is fenced in.
One fenced area, the whole front and the back, or the back and the?
It's just that goes from the sides. On each side of the house.
Move.
And then around the whole back, and that's why I had an issue with the wired one, because. I was trying to wire it along the fence, but I have a gate on one side, and a gate on another, and I would have had to dig, and then they was talking about splicing and all this stuff, and I just. Couldn't figure out how to get it like around the house and then back over, I mean. You know, I'm not an expert at. Where. Electric fences.
Is there enough room for the dog to be on a run? Where he's, he's anchored to the, to a lead?
I have him on a, I have a lead out there now, it's not a run, I have him anchored to near the. Deck, which is right outside my slider, when I, I work from home, so. When it's nice, I'll leave the slider open, I'm right on my couch right there, and I let them go outside. You know, and then, when this started happening, it was like I could hear. I mean, she knows, as soon as I heard the motion, I'm out there, and. Obviously, that's not, that's not gonna work, so, now I've been trying to keep him in more, and go out with them, when I go out with them, or put him on the lead, or. You know, at the same time, I'm trying to train him on this fence and with the corrective collars.
Like you said, these are always, never, so. So we listened to the recommendations, I've, you know, I'm gonna actually listen to your neighbors now, and see what they have to say. Um. I, I know everybody here wants to work the situation out, so, um. That's, well, it's all gonna be taken into consideration, so.
And I can only speak on the instances that I know, as far as the other dogs, I have not heard that. As far as I know, my dogs are not constantly running the neighborhood, I, I do not think that's the case, I know when my dogs are not in the yard. Um, there was the one incident where like the gate got left open, I probably figured it out within minutes, and my neighbor told me that he saw them taken off, and I went right to the police station. To try to find them, so. You know, I mean. Things happen, I, I have a teenage daughter that was trying to do me a favor and move along, and.
Okay.
I get it, but I'm. I'm trying. And I apologize, I don't want anybody to be afraid of my dogs, certainly not a little child. I have a kid myself.
Thank you, Ms. Fugel.
Thanks.
If I may, if you'd like to speak, sir, your name and, um.
It can scare, drive self madness.
Great, yeah, that, give me to it. You tell, swear to tell the truth, tell the truth, and I meant the truth.
I do.
Thank you.
Um, I did not witness what happened with the terrier. When I got on location. Lisa was calling for distress, there were a hundred feet up the road, I ran to the location. At that point, the neighbor was taking in the ter- carrier, and Lisa was fleeing with the children. But at that same time, then the Doberman came on the scene, that Doberman was wild, it charged the group. It was barking, I had to puff myself up, and probably twenty or thirty seconds, yell at the dog to go home, before it finally turned tail and went home. At that point, I got the, I got Lisa's dog and brought it back to the daycare. So that dog was not this sweet, gentle, innocent thing, it was wild, and it was. I didn't, I was gonna be attacked, to be honest with you. But thankfully, you know, I think in its youth. I think it was trying to defend the house, but. It was probably two hundred and fifty feet, so about a football field away from. Its residence. Did not belong there.
Um, we've heard the testimony that the dogs routinely roam around the neighborhood, have you witnessed any of that?
I don't live in the neighborhood, I just, my daughter was being with, uh, in Lisa's daycare for the day, my wife and I both work, so. But I happened to be there, and I'm glad I was there at the time, because had that dog's instinct to hunt kicked in, you've got children running down the road. You know, it wouldn't take much for that dog to. Get triggered and pursue after them. That's all I had.
All you had, thank you, Mr. Lord.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you. Yeah. Name and address for the record?
Lisa Whitehead, Six Bertrand Road, in Southwick.
And. But you swear to tell the truth, so, thank you.
Um, I just wanted to say that. I don't want anything bad to happen to your dogs. But you have to realize, that's my business. I had ten kids the first time it happened.
I know you wanna.
And then, yeah, and then I had five, I had. Four, I think four children the second time, I had three year olds, and I'm yelling to run down the road, that's my liability. And if, when the dog, her dog is attacking my dog. Kinsley, one of the little kids, wouldn't leave. She was three, and she's crying, trying to get it, she's like, it's my liability if one of my children get bit. So I think it's more that, when the first time, and I brought her to the vet, and it was an over two hundred dollar bill. Liz says, will you give her the bill? And I said, no, I said, all of our dogs get out of our house, it happens. There's been plenty of times I've opened my gate and put somebody's dog that's been running the neighborhood. In my gate and waited for somebody to walk by. I'm all right with that, my dog has gotten out, my dog doesn't leave my yard, she's very well trained. But. I said to Liz, I'm not gonna give her the bill, I have to live next to her, and we all live in a neighborhood that we all need to live, work together, and Liz is like, well, she's. Supposed to pay the bill, I said, no, I'm not doing that, because I assumed it was a one time thing. But it's not. In June, one of the officers, the neighbor, the new neighbor, called me and said, Lisa, I, she had just moved in, there's an officer out here with two dogs in the car. I don't know any of the dogs in the neighborhood, can you meet them outside? And I was working. So I went out front, and I looked in the backseat, and I said, you need to call Liz, those dogs. Have been on quarantine, the, the dogs have gone after my dog, and they're not supposed to be out of the yard. I said. She lives four houses down, and that's where the dogs go, I said, please call Liz before you bring them back. He didn't, he brought them back, which, I didn't make us think about. Our dogs get out. But this is excessive, and, you know, I do understand that, you know, she's trying to work on it, but. It's my liability of my business, I don't usually walk that way anymore, I totally forgot about it that day. When the kids wanted to go for a walk, cause it was so close to the parents picking up, I, they can see me if I'm walking down the street. And I totally forgot I had been avoiding going down that road, that side, the end of the road since the first, um, attack. I did not bring her to the vet the second time. I called the vet, there was just minor scratches on her neck and stuff, and the vet says, would you want her to be seen? And I said, well, they're not bite marks like last time. I said, can I just treat her with the cream that you had given me from the first time? I didn't wanna have to go after her for another, but, you know, to say, now you're gonna pay the bills, you know, I just, I wanted Liz just to handle it. And my own, and I don't want nothing bad to happen to her dogs, I'm not. Like I said, I take, I don't know how many dogs I put in my backyard, if they've escaped, it's not an issue in my neighborhood, but it's happened, we, all our dogs get out, what's normal. But when it becomes a liability, my daycare kids too. And my dog walks by, she don't even look at the yard, my dog doesn't even know how to bark. My dog doesn't even bark. So we walk by, she doesn't look at that, she just walks straight on her leash, she's very well trained. And I didn't even know the second time the dog had gone out, we, I didn't even look in the yard, we just, the dog came out from the, up behind us, we had already walked. Pretty much walked, you know, to the end of her house. Before the, um. The dogs, the second time, started attacking my dog. You know, the liability is sending three children down the street, a three year old on their own with traffic. Because I don't want them to get built, be bit. You know, I have, I have written permission from the parents, and, you know, my licenser to be able to walk these kids in the neighborhood. But I don't, you know, I don't want two incidents in having a kid by accidenting a bit too.
The, the time that you were talking about just now, what, do you know, was the. Was that one of the times the gate was left, or the fence was left open, or did we know if the dog went over the fence?
I don't know, because I never looked, I never even thought, I totally forgot about it, I never even looked at a yard, to be honest with you. But I have seen that dog driving by, and. In, in a nice way, it is kinda cute the way he goes up the fence. He crawls up the fence, and he hops out, I mean, I've been in my car, and he'll run around the front yard, and then he'll run, crawl back over the fence, and it is cute. But he, I guess he just picks on certain dogs, cause there are other dog, people say they, in the neighborhood, and I ask that they haven't had problems. But there have been a few other people that said they have had problems, and they don't walk by that house anymore. So my issue is, obviously, I'm gonna stay away from the end of the yard, you know, I don't wanna terrorize her dog, but my dog is not reactive. And I don't want that to happen, and then what am I gonna do with my dog with the daycare kids? If my dog starts become. Anxiety or reactive to other dogs, she literally will, my dog will walk by another dog and not, just keep walking to focus, she's very well trained.
Can you tell me how to do that? I gotta check that lab, though she doesn't want anybody.
My son, who's in the Navy, is the one who trained it, was his dog, and then gave it to me, cause he kept sent to Japan. That's it.
That's it?
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak?
Yeah, I guess so, if there's no other testimony.
At this point, since there is no other testimony, we're gonna close the public portion of the. Meeting and discuss what's going on here, so I believe the motion to close the public hearing.
Motion made.
Second.
Call, call, vote, just, I.
Doug Morgan, yes.
Thank you.
Think we can have discussion, right?
Yeah, we're gonna have some discussion, yeah.
Yeah.
So I know we all. We're all saying, we don't want. No one wants to take Mr. Joe's dogs away, um. But it, there does seem to be a little bit of a problem, and I understand the financial aspects of it. Ms. Bennett, I'm gonna ask you, do you think if a, 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 a larger. Fence in the front of Stockade. Would that, do you think that would have any effect?
No.
No?
Um, again, my concern is that there seems to be a lack of. Concern. That this is happening. Gates locked open, this, and that, it was an accident.
No, no, no.
My concern is that. Based on how much I'm hearing. At this point, about how many times these guys get out. Um, and knowing that the Doberman is now going to mirror. The boss. I don't see. I don't see a stockade being the solution. I do think. It's gotta be, there's gotta be a forcing of. Recognition that this is an issue. And there's got to be some sort of enclosure bill. That's the only, and I, and I get it, it's an expense. Um. But when you have. A situation like that. And a liability, I think. I tend to go for, you know. The biggest. Plan ever. Versus, you know, just, let's see how the electric fence does. Let's see how, you know, find out them. Let's see if we could keep a plus, cause I just don't see that happen. I don't see. And again, we go back to, had to be forced to, um, get the dogs like, had to be forced to get the dogs vaccinated, had to be forced to do it, it's like. It's an act, in fact. So. I don't see. Um. I just, I think we need to go as strong as possible. And then hopefully. We'll be done. But leading the dogs to an enclosure, making sure the enclosure is secure, locked, whatever, with the top, so they can't run out or climb up. Um, can't dig out. Now, we can do, we can do stone with horse mats, if you want. We can do, but there has to be a top over it, there has to be security, there has to be something that prevents these dogs from. That yard, cause we already know the dogs are not happy with certain dogs that pass by. So. My, you know, I can forego the cement base. If we do stone and, and, you know, horse mats or something like that. But it has to be secure, it has to be.
I have a question. I, I guess. We, we've, we've seen this type of thing before.
Yeah.
And I'll, I'll spare everyone my. Point about dog hearings, by the way, still the worst thing about being on this board. Um. I think. Is it. We've done in the past where we just required the dog to be either tied or. On lead, like there's no, let it run to the front door, to the car to get in, they gotta be on a lead.
Right.
And if they're in the backyard. I don't see why. As a, on a trial basis. That the dog has to be tied, so if you have to tie it up. From the, from the back slider, and he can stay in the backyard on a. Forty foot radius thing in the backyard, or thirty foot, however big is the backyard. And that's it, but the dog's not allowed loose in the yard, period, cause obviously, if he's a climber, and an escape artist, and a digger, or whatever. Over, under. Whatever, but why can't he just be on a, a, you know, it has, and we'll, we can render a decision that, you know, short of declaring a dog dangerous, cause that has.
Right.
You know, ramifications, right, to the homeowner and their insurance and, and everything else. And just insist. That the dog be tied at all times.
There's only one problem with that.
That's why I'm asking. Huh?
If you don't.
Then both of them. I have no objection.
Without them getting tangled up and into an issue, that, and that was something that I, I thought about, you know, all up to this. You tie both dogs up, awesome, but they're gonna tangle.
They're gonna get hurt.
They're gonna get hurt.
But the big guy can't climb the fence, right?
Right, but.
Let's have a discussion for a minute, and I, I, I don't have any objection, but let me, let me just, I just wanted to ask Ms. Bennett.
Sure.
Just.
But if the gate gets left open.
Uh huh.
There you go.
I'm sorry.
If the gate left, gets left open. There you go, I have a, I have a daughter. When she was a teenager, I couldn't rely on her, you know, bring her dishes in, I find him in the closet, you know what I mean? We have kids, there's, we can't, we can't rely on the kids being so thoughtful and, you know. Force I to, to, to remember to shut the gate, or lock the gate, or whatever, but again. If we. Tying out, I, I would love to do that with one of them, but you got two dogs that are. Tying out, I, I would love to do that with one of them, but you got two dogs that are, that are gonna be an issue. So it's gonna be very hard to do. It would be very hard to do that. And she's already had the dogs tied out, and we've already had the issues happen. I mean, I really would love to do this, but like the least amount of expense and the least amount of stuff, but I've not gotten cooperation. I've not seen any cooperation.
One dog has climbed the fence, the other has not, right? So one dog needs to be.
Oh, definitely. But again, you've got the Doberman who's going to follow the Boston attitude wise.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, but if the, if the Boston is tied, the Doberman's gonna hang out with the. With the Boston.
Try that. I, I, I can, I can see your point.
They don't both need to be tied and then endangered.
Yeah.
The dogs need to be contained.
Right.
No doubt about it.
Right.
The fence is three feet all the way around. I don't think putting a collar one in the front is gonna keep them in, they'll go out the side.
What about an automatic locking gate? So if a gate gets opened by the daughter, leaves it open, automatically shuts them off.
I have one of those on my, our enclosure.
Let's get the fence.
And you actually have to, you can't, it, there's no way for it to open, you actually have to.
Excellent, good. So, so I mean, I'm willing to, to, to see that. Um, my concern is, again, what if this happens again? I mean, we're not gonna, so it's like, it's training your dog. That it bites, okay, if your dog bites and you're training it, um, oh, we've got the dog trained, it's not gonna bite anymore. We won't know that for sure until the dog either dies or bites somebody again. You're just not gonna be guaranteed to have that hundred percent guarantee, this is gonna work. So. This is why I'm leaving it up to you guys.
Even if it's a kennel, if it's a totally enclosed kennel.
Right.
No matter what the solution is, it relies on the dog's humans.
It does.
To do the thing and put the dog in, or to tie the dog up.
Right.
To close the gate, or to even put the electric collar on. It's the people.
Exactly.
Not the dog.
Right.
I don't know that we can count on the people to be that diligent.
Exactly. That's my issue. And now when we have little kids running around.
And I'm worried about a little kid getting bit, or this is why I had anybody getting bit.
Right. And if I, if my dog went out and, and was attacking somebody else's dog, if I bet I'd be on it. I would probably have been myself, but I would be on it following that dog.
That's not fair.
Are you also, Ms. Bennett?
I'm, I, like I said, if we can do that, you know, comfortably, I'm great.
Ms. Fijal, go ahead.
So. My dog, the little one, when he's on the lead, he's fine. He doesn't try to get up and he's not fighting. I mean, I have a video I took of him last night. The dog, you know, just barking like crazy, they just sat on the deck and was looking at him, like. So if he's on the lead and I still keep the electric fence up, the Doberman's not gonna go through. I mean. It's, it's making it seem like I'm always leaving the gate open. It happened one time.
It only takes.
I understand that, I understand that, but and you're also all assuming that my Doberman is vicious, but she's not. I. I get it, a big eighty-pound Doberman running down the street probably looks scary. She's got floppy ears and a big tail. She's not. Yes, I actually know what you're saying, but she hasn't got, like, nothing's happened with her. So just assume that she's gonna be aggressive like he is. It's not fair. It's not fair. She's sweet as can be.
Is he neutered?
What's that?
Is he, is he neutered?
He is, but I got him when he was five. Like I said, he was a surrender. So, and up until. I'm, I'm not even when I, I've been there maybe three years, it's been the last year and a half, whenever the first incident was. Um, that this started. So I don't know where this is coming from. It was never told to me if he did that before, I don't know. Didn't have any issues with him prior to this. So, like, I think me personally, and I'm just like trying to get out of money, I don't, money's tight, I'm sorry, I don't have. Even put it, I'd love to, like I said, I'd love to have a great, beautiful fenced in yard. But him on the lead and if. Both of them with the collar and her with the electric fence, even if she got out of the gate, even if the gate was open, she's gonna get hit with that fence. It's before the gate in the middle of my front yard. So at least, I mean, I know what she's saying and I, I, I get it, but I'm not even getting it like. I don't know if it's even gonna work. Look, from what I see right now, working with them, they don't like that fence. They don't wanna go near it. Um, I understand what she's saying about the two leads and I agree with her, that would be a nightmare. And I have a, a deck that's high up. It's on a second floor, so I don't need any dogs hanging themselves or anything like that, but so far with him on the lead. And her, you know, with the fence, the electric fence, it's been working. Um, I can't guarantee that the gate is not gonna accidentally be open. I don't go out that way very often. It's not a gate that we use commonly. Normally we use the other side. Um, and that's where my cars park, so it's fully visible when it's open. It's not something that's gonna accidentally be open. It's the other side that's not used a lot. She happened to use it that day, it's moving on and didn't shut it.
Can you enclose?
I'm seeing like I'm making excuses, I really don't want kids scared and I really don't want her, lose her business or anything like that. It just. Financially. I don't know how I'm gonna cover money to build this enclosure and put up fences and, um.
Can you enclose underneath your deck?
But there's no way to get them under there. It's like a addition in the basement, it's under there, but just windows, there's no, it's not a walkout basement.
Not elevated deck?
It's an elevated deck, but underneath it is just two full-size windows to the basement. It's not a whole walkout basement, it's kinda.
You can't walk under.
No, you can walk under the deck, but there's windows, there's no door. It's, it, it's, it's probably about a, I could walk under the deck, let's just say that, four foot nine, so it's probably about a. Four foot space under there. I mean, it would, it would.
Well, you would have gates, you could walk outside.
I guess, I'd have to walk them down around and.
If that's the most economical solution, are you willing to do that?
I.
And, and then you have to do that when the dogs go out.
I have to see if it's possible. I don't know if it's something to build it, but I don't know.
I was gonna ask.
It falls on an angle, so it's like part of the depth. There's a hill in the backyard, I, I have a video, I do that. There's a, uh. There's a hill in the backyard and it comes up to the deck. So it's like the deck kinda goes. You know, it goes out this way and there's a lot of space here, but from here down, it slopes down. So it's not. Not the same amount of space under the whole deck, if that makes sense. I mean, I'll do what I, you tell me to do, if I have to do what I have to do, I'll figure it out, but I just financially, just.
I don't know, run from the door to the.
I think the second, well, first of all, well, if there's been any miscommunication. Between anyone here and anyone else, uh. Clearly, it's not acceptable to have these dogs run around. Clear, hundred percent. Nodding of heads, right? Okay. So my, my take on it is, and I, I think I. Agree with you in that the second dog is doing what the first dog is telling to do. So I, I'm of the impression that I think, and I, and I, and I understand the financial argument, but to understand. The ramifications is if your dog injures another dog or God forbid a person. Okay, that's a whole nother circle of financial hell for anyone. Um, who owns a dog that does that. And if we get to the point that this board has to declare a dog dangerous. Uh, you'll be uninsurable. From your homeowner's insurance, as long as those dogs reside with you. So nobody wants to get to that step. Ms. Whitehead, I'm sure that you wanna be able to walk on your street. And, and I, and I, and it's.
For dogs.
And, uh, you know, again, I'm not gonna belabor it, but I mean, every single time I've been in front of. One of these things, it's kind of a violation of a good neighbor policy. And, well, frankly, a lot of stuff, whether it's dogs or zoning, it's good neighbor policy. Run the show. So I would be amenable. On a very short leash, no pun intended. That the little guy gets tied up whenever he is outside of the house. If you're walking him out the front door to put him in the car to take him to the rail trail or some other place, he's on a leash. If he's in the backyard, even though it's fenced in, he's on a run. And the other dog with the electric fence. Thing, if you can, you need to resolve that and get that working. And then if we have any report of that dog loose, he doesn't have to chase anybody, he doesn't have to go after anybody. But a phone call to the ACO or the police department that the dogs are running around, we'll be right back in front of here. Okay, to, to, this, and this is my suggestion, I am but one member of a board of three, but I'm just throwing this out here. We'll be right back here on short notice to take further more drastic action with these dogs. Because I don't, everyone who lives on that street and the adjoining streets and abutting streets. Have the right to the quiet enjoyment of their own property and to be able to walk on the sidewalk or in the street with their dogs, with their kids, with their parakeet. Right? And that's it. So that's my suggestion, taking into account, I understand some of the financial side of it. I am, and, and I think if we can control the little guy. And then electric fence, the big guy. We have a chance. But you as the owner have to step up and commit. To agree that if this dog is, either of these dogs are, are loose or roaming around the neighborhood. Our, our, our deal would be off. And we'd have to figure out some other way, and it would either be dramatically more expensive or dramatically more draconian for you. As to where we go from here. Because I hate these things, we spent over an hour on it, I don't wanna do it again. And, you know, and drag your neighbors down here and, and the ACO and this board. On what should be something that, you know, Liz, I agree with you a hundred percent. If my dog. Went after or bit another dog, I, you know, I, it would be over very, very quickly. And, 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 and I, and I get it. A hundred percent, so we just need to stop it. I, I get it. So we just need to make sure it doesn't happen again. So that's my suggestion. To this board for further discussion.
Prior to you bringing up the lead aspect of it, that was something I was gonna ask about, um. You know, I know there's three foot, is, does the fence go around and then to the front of the house? Where does the dog get up by the road? That's what I'm curious. Could the, could the fence be segmented? Could the yard be another partial fence, keeping the dogs even farther back, be put up? A taller piece?
Probably.
Would you, could you put a piece of stockade there? That would block the dog from seeing the other dogs.
Right.
So we did something similar at my previous.
Well, that's what I was saying is, I was looking into putting at least the six-foot. Stockade where the, in the front where he's getting out. That's where he's getting to the street. Is that on my left, the left-hand side of my house that we don't really use that part of the yard, it's kinda up and back and. But that's where, and that's where.
That decide you park your car on, or?
No, no.
Where we've brought it up on the satellite, so.
Yeah, the side that I park my car and he's never trying to get over that fence.
So what I'm basically asking is, I see your house, is it an L shape? Or I can't quite tell.
Yeah, it's like.
From going from one corner of the, that house, blocking off the front access with a piece of stockade. As well as the, just saying, the, addressing the issue with the lead. And I strongly, I, I would ask that the auto lock be put in mandatory. Um, that way, there's no, you know, there's, there's still a chance the dog can sneak out at, at some point. You know, well, it's closing, but I mean, have you been, you just have the one daughter, one child, I mean, I'm not. Have, have you really stressed to her the importance?
No.
After everything, yeah.
Yes.
You know, I, I would be inclined.
And she wanted and has nothing to do with it.
Are you suggesting the stockade, the higher stockade fence for visual blocking only?
No, no, not for just visual blocking. But I'm just gonna say, at, at my previous residence, when I lived in Westfield, we had a very similar yard setup. What we did is put a stockade fence at the corner of the home, an eight foot, or it was eight or six. You couldn't see the front yard from the, in the backyard.
Yeah.
And that obviously, six foot also caused. Sec, because it seems like she's got an additional fence that goes all the way in front.
Yeah.
That would be a, an additional layer.
I'm just worried it's still three feet on the sides, and if the dog wants to get out, it's gonna jump over the side.
To do a fence there, I would do a six-foot, like a stockade, there's no way he's gonna go over that, but the only.
Over the front.
In the front, and you're right. For the side chain link in the front, he can still see.
And he can still jump out, climb out.
Uh, that was just an additional option that would help, I mean, it may help block. Because it seems that it's when the other dogs are out there that.
I mean, he's doing really, really well with the electric fence, and like I said, I mean, I know that I'm like level four. Feeling the other day, he did, he is a free guy that day. So I'm not saying that's the solution, but I think that. With the lead. Which is he's been getting put on when I'm not training him and her, they both have a collar, but an extra collar for her. Plus they have, if two collars, they have that and the behavior collar. I think that'll work. I mean, I can take the extra step and. See what else.
Every, every layer of security you add, add something, but, um.
What is the lead attached to?
Um, I have the screw, that heart screw, and it's right, he can go from. Right outside the slider to probably maybe midway through. The yard, so the.
But not near the fence.
What's that? Not.
Not near the fence on any side.
Even see the front there on either side. I have a big, big, big deck. On one side, like, and then there's a step up and there's a wraparound deck. He can even go down the wraparound, go a little bit into the yard, or go a little bit over to the right, but cannot get over to that. As far as I know.
So we're saying a gate lock?
An auto lock has to be, it's a mandatory.
Gotta be on the run.
Gotta be on the run.
Gotta have the collars on.
Do they have the auto lock for the chain link fence?
They have, there's different, it's different styles, but yes, they have different styles of auto locks. They're not, certainly not necessarily like the one I explained, but they, they, yeah. And you have to design it so the gate, it has to slide a slight angle to it, so it shuts itself.
Just like a spring.
I mean, I.
Some of it.
Just, yeah.
I can put a, a chain in there and just.
Well, the auto lock is a mandatory, you know, find that, um. My recommendation personally would be, I know, I'm not gonna tell you how to spend your money or how to sell it. I would eventually work up towards fencing that yard in with a higher fence, obviously. Um, and.
Kennel will be cheaper.
Yeah, that's, I was wondering, I said, let's, I was gonna say price the two and see which one works out better and. You know, I know you're a single mom, I know you've got, you know, whatever your limited income is, I don't wanna make any assumptions. But, you know, I would lean probably to, seem to be less stress for everybody and. End this would, you know, I would lean towards definitely trying to get. Uh, uh, some sort of enclosure as well. But, you know, the auto lock, the lead, um, you said you've got the collars. Those are mandatory as of right now, is the way I'm leaning.
My dog kennel used on Craigslist. And then I got another one used on Craigslist and made it bigger. Cheap. And I have papers.
That was a recommendation, I was gonna say checkout marketplace. That's where I go.
So again, we're saying the auto gate lock. Has to be on the lead. Both dogs have to have those collars on. Is that gonna work for you? I, I'm concerned, because if it doesn't work, it's because there was an issue and it's because we didn't order that dog to be contained. It's again relying on the humans.
No, I heard you say you, you work from home. So the dog is never obviously left out with no one home. You know, another thing I would recommend is, you know, not in the, you know, I know they gotta go out and use the facilities and whatever, but. Uh, somebody keep an eye, I mean, you know, you keep.
You can even put an alarm on your gate. That chimes when it's open.
I do have, um.
Uh, it's just, that was another recommendation, but, but again, you know, those cameras are there. You see the dog going, you gotta, those cameras aren't gonna really work, but. Not.
But you've got the dog on the lead all the time, so. Won't be a problem, right?
So.
Gonna satisfy you, Liz?
So we're just to make sure, I would have both gates. Chimed, auto lock, both gates, any tag, any e-risk on the backyard. Needs to be. You know, firmly in place. Um, I guess on them, on the lead. Making sure that the dog has food or her has water protection from weather. That kind of thing, so we just don't tie a dog out in the middle of the yard and make sure that, you know, he's got some sort of protection for the weather. Order, all any stuff. Um, Doberman, then going to mimic this other one.
Both have to have the collars.
Both have to have that electric collar on after the profession professionally trained on the college. I would like to see somebody come in and train them for the college, to make sure that we have the correct.
And I know it was by the influence assessment, plus just as much.
Make sure we have. Somebody doing this so that we know it's not correctly. Cause we just don't wanna. That's very nice, but um, that kind of thing. Even, you know, prenatal trans.
That has been ordered before.
Yeah.
Ordered. And of course, the fines need to be paid.
Right, this fines all need to be paid, that's um, probably seven hundred fifty or so dollars. Understood. This.
What's that?
Actual decision.
It's the.
Yeah, we have to write.
She is understanding that they can end up in criminal charges for not paying fines.
Yeah, that was gonna, I was gonna mention that, that. City or well, bylaws, city ordinance, if you continue to not pay them, they become a criminal.
Right, becomes a criminal offense. So we need to.
So what do you think, Dove?
How long do I have on this auto?
I I think, I I. I don't wanna overthink it, and I don't know, I don't know the auto locks, and I have a question for Ms. Bennett, only cause I, it's been a while since I had a dog. And we used to have one of those invisible fencing's and it was great. Until the dog left, no, and then they don't wanna come back because they get banged on the way back as hard as on the way up.
That's the problem, this one gets them all the way, like as soon as he's over, it'll keep going, it keeps.
Right.
The problem is, is that when when a dog gets zapped, if he goes through fencing.
And then it stops.
It doesn't stop.
You know, there's.
That's why I'm asking, cause I.
It can come back.
Been a decade or more since I had a dog, alright.
If it's, if it's designed to let it stop when the dog comes back, okay, fine. But I, my experience of electric fencing is the dog will get zapped if he goes through it. And the dog has no idea how to go back into the yard because he just got zapped, it's like, I'm not gonna go back for there.
But I think these newer, I think what you're alluding to is that. Once they exceed the perimeter, it goes off and it won't stop going off until they get back within the perimeter or the the radius. Is that how it works?
Yep, it'll, and so he she can come back and then stop.
It'll stop.
Training isn't.
So I just think like the, I I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, training is very, very crucial.
I get it, but I think, I think we have to recognize. The the fact that. Well, just leave it, I think what you can do is is the the. Return on the fence is a matter of a spring type pin.
It's, these are.
It's it's not a brutal expense, it's not, you know, it's not.
It's a old fence, I wasn't sure.
Yeah, so that they make them close when it, you know, and then and relash when it, when uh, it's left open by error or just, you know, it'll do that. And then I I really do think keeping the little guy in the yard will keep the big guy in the yard. And we can go from there and we can. I I think, you know, there there's a um, there's a financial aspect to this, if we pile on, it's gonna be insurmountable for everybody and we're gonna end up in a worse spot. So that's again where I'm coming from, we could say that we, we strongly suggest that. You know, the dog we train, I've already made it very clear that, you know, I will have zero tolerance for either of these dogs from here out. So it's it's gonna be worse, worse, so yes. But it's gonna have to be in steps, and if we say you have to do this, 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 this and this, and it's, it really isn't financially feasible, then. We might as well, you know, it's not gonna be beneficial for anyone, so I.
Right.
I'm more of a, you know, we should take a progressive discipline kind of step here, and if we can contain the dogs so that folks can enjoy the. Walking in the neighborhood and then the dogs stay in their own yard, cause it seems like they're okay when they're not around other people. Great. And and so they gotta be on, you know, again. Mister Chairman, on a leash when they're not. Uh, tied off, you know, when the little guy's not tied off in the backyard. And the the big guy needs that zapper collar. And then the returns on the gates, and then we strongly suggest that the dogs go to some kind of training or. Counseling, whatever you wanna call it, so that hopefully, you know.
Especially if that kind of system.
Establish learned behavior. So that, you know, we don't end up back here. And then, and that's where we go from here, and like I said, uh, and to be very clear. Um, you know, we don't wanna be back here again.
You wanna do a two week period? Has to be all done by two weeks. No, we have to be, the case secured, have to be two weeks, by two weeks.
Yeah, I was gonna say. I would say thirty days.
Already been.
And. And um, I don't know how the other board members feel about. There's some sort of grace period on paying back the fines until this is determined whether or not. Um, this situation is gonna work because. If we have to go to the next step and Ms. Fijo has to buy a enclosure. And she, I I don't wanna make her have to make a choice between an enclosure or keep my dogs or. You know, cause we all know financially, things costs are expensive. Again, but Miss Dale did say. You can find them online, you know, that might be something to look for regardless of what we've put in place. Then that eliminates everything and 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 Ms. Bennett, that's what she's looking for, um, but. Um, I don't know how the other board members feel on some sort of grace period on the payback.
I don't know if it goes right to criminal court. Automatically, you have to give a period of time when you're issued a ticket that you can.
It actually, they the department would actually have to file the complaint, so. We have to just let them know, okay, this is a violation, please file the criminal complaint, ask to go to the court. Show cause, hearing, all that type of stuff, so um.
The dogs are licensed and up to speed on shots and everything now?
No, I I think I got the, so when you said quarantine, I know a lot of people. They think one thing you didn't realize is that, I think Mister Moven alluded to that. A little bit of a confusion there, I did see that the way you explained it. But I'm I'm just going to make that based on what I saw. Um, that assumption, but you need to, anything Ms. Bennett says regarding the dogs.
Uh, just to be clear, I just think if there was a difference of of. What one was aware of factually happened, well, we've aired it all out here, so it. I I don't doubt that any of what was said happened, and you were here to hear most, if not all of that testimony, so. I don't see you disagreeing that it did or didn't happen, so my, I I have no issue with with putting some of the fines uh, in abeyance. You know, subject that we, you know, that the things that we're re- recommending are done and that um. Dogs to added trouble for a year or something like that, and then, you know, to prove that what we're doing is working. And then we can, we can, you know, reduce the uh, the amount of the fine, I wouldn't eliminate it because that. Takes away all of the.
The fines for the roaming part, the written warning was for the failure to quarantine. State was ready to charge five hundred dollars a day. For any violations, but I decided for the written warning because.
And I have.
The the two hundred and four hundred dollars.
So we can, I think we can, we can put this together for our next meeting, but you, I think. Cause we have to write a written decision, but in the meantime, cause we're not, I don't know, we're not meeting next week, cause it's all day. I would strongly suggest that I, well. Subject to a vote of this board, but uh, I would guarantee you that the springs on the gate or the closure on the gate and the. That the the dogs don't go out off leash. Ever, and the little guy's gotta be tied up and the big guy's gotta be on the the collar.
Both dogs have to be on the collar.
Both though, gate, both dogs on the collar. That will be in our decision.
How do I show you that? I purchased the spring for this gate, once there's dog is talking, then I.
I was gonna suggest you go inspect them.
Right.
Does that seem reasonable, I mean, um, again, I am but one member up here, but I think that that's.
Found some common space around here, but. This guy, yeah.
Ms. Bennett?
Oh.
Ma'am? So, so I know, and I I was coming to that next, I I mean.
I I just want her dogs to be safe and.
We heard you, and that's, I'm kinda taking that into account was your testimony as well, so.
I mean, often then one of them get out, it's like, why, that's. I would never want that.
No. Oh, thank you. Make a motion on the, this is my first one, like, I'm gonna make a motion now on the, what we've agreed to.
He might, he might know better, but I mean, I'm. Writing a decision for you guys.
And then we'll just do the little period of, oh, yeah, I can.
I think you, we tip, uh, everybody, we typically would vote at our next meeting, but we've given the guideline, so. In two weeks, if Ms. Bennett's back with the pictures and if we just would affirm our decision making process, then we'd impose. The conditions that we already told you we're gonna impose, but I don't wanna, I don't want you to have to. Have to wait or wait two weeks for us to render a decision with, cause in those two weeks, something worse could happen to the dogs or someone else, so. Let's start getting.
Right, the thirty days starts now.
Sure.
That's.
You all right, Ms. Parker?
Yep. Got it.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Next item on the agenda is I'm going to be discussing the reinstatement of the Open Space Committee with Mister Pratt.
This will be much quicker, I hope.
We don't.
Thank God, that's right. Okay, so basically.
But still tell the truth.
Okay. I'd just like to get the Open Space Committee back together, reestablish it, um, I'd like it to fall under conservation. I know it had been taken over at one point by the select board, was. Taken from Concom when under select board. Then dismantled again, I'm not sure why, but basically that's our land management tool that we use in town. And part of North Pond would be, you know, manage a little bit better if we did have our Open Space Committee back together. You know, other places in town also were managed well by that, as far as getting people to take care of trails, maintain uh. The parking areas, things like that.
It's that what the subcommittee did before.
Yes.
With all land management.
Mostly land management, and also they were also responsible for. Getting together the open space plan, which is responsible for seed money that we get uh, through its town grants. I mean, through state grants, actually. Through DCR. That has to be in place, or else they won't fund uh. Grants through DCR.
Are you called OSRP's, open space and rec plans, so. Just recreation have anything to do with this?
That, I think that was how we ended up where we ended up, but predates myself, but I think that the OSRP is. I think there's a, a diff- a difference between an open space. Subcommittee as they're recommending and and the a committee that would develop an OSRP, cause they said there's a, there's.
Well, they actually were a part of it, I was on the first one in town and it was developed basically for that reason. And then it evolved from there to do more land management stuff, but it was also in place for that purpose, that was the original purpose for the. Open space recreation plan.
So don't you just need a pool of volunteers?
They need a pool of volunteers, I need permission from you guys, apparently.
To have some kind of work group, not necessarily, it's not really another committee, it is a.
It would be a committee.
Work.
That would sit together and decide what needs to happen, they would go out to different sites and discuss what there would be needed to be done. You know, what's happening at those places, what needs to occur out there as far as trail maintenance, as far as.
Okay, yeah, go do that, don't do that.
And we use, utilize money out of our budget to uh, fund certain projects. That would happen like this, you know, for trail maintenance and things like that. Cleanups.
When did the previous Open Space Committee, when was the last time it was in place?
Was it two years ago, maybe, when it was dissolved?
Now you mentioned North Pond and the conservation aspect of it. Um, I'm assuming conservation is not going to try and give some of that management to Open Space Committee? I guess.
Um, so the management.
Of their conservation restriction, I should.
No, we can't do anything with the conservation restriction, that is through the state. So nothing would change with the conservation restriction, that has to go through legislative body at the state level. In order to be changed, nothing can happen really.
Well, I know we've got the task force starting to work on that, so. You know, just.
But you might have people in there to clean up.
Absolutely, yeah, right.
Fencing.
Absolutely, yeah.
You just need.
We have, you know, we came together, we made some, had some ideas about as far as how to restrict people from certain sensitive areas. You know, they would be helping out with those aspects, uh, plantings, fencing, signage. This is very helpful. I I was kind of hoping that this would also be. A seed pot for conservation commissioners, you know, people who would like to be on conservation could start there. See what land management is about, see what we are all about as conservation commission members, maybe go even to some um. Fundamentals trainings for conservation commission members to see if that's really what they want to do, because. Sometimes people get on committees, say they think they know what it's about, but some of them have never been to a meeting. And they just heard through the grapevine, oh yeah, it's a, and they really don't know.
That training have a cost?
The training does have a cost, which we do usually fund through our our conservation commission.
That's, so the funding would come through conservation, is that?
Correct, but you know, we would have to figure out the budget, I'm not sure what interest there would be, how many would go. Um, but there are usually two trainings, one in the fall, one in the spring. Uh, that are pretty popular at state runs.
I think I I talked to the previous chair about this a little bit, and I think. I think the theory is great, I just think that the. To do, to have a group of volunteers to. To work as a, as a working group of reporting back into the. Um, the Conservation Commission. Does, I don't know that we, when you start creating a subcommittee, they have to have. Agenda, you have to have a quorum, to have a meeting, you have to have minutes, you've gotta do hybrid meetings.
We we did have a successful Open Space Committee for many years, like I said, I was on the first one, maybe. Two thousand one.
Right.
We started and then it was taken away maybe twenty seventeen or twenty eighteen. And and by the select board started to run it. And then dissolved again, so I'm not sure of why.
Yeah, I thought that was for the purpose was to develop the OSRP.
But the other Open Space Committee was doing that task.
But then, I I wanted. I'm not trying to be argumental, I agree, but I'm trying to hundred percent support your idea, cause I I, we watched what happened with the Ag Bomb. This past week with their open farm day, they managed to put together fifty, sixty people to help out with that.
Right.
And God bless, right, I'm.
But this is what, another way of getting those volunteers to come in is to have this committee. You know, right now. It's hard to organize that kind of a thing.
Yeah.
You know, we we do cleanup days at North Pond, we do cleanup days at Soho Palace, you know, there are things that do happen.
Yeah.
But it's not an organized group that's always on that task of. Walking the land, seeing what needs to happen, bringing back recommendations of what needs to be improved out there as far as trails, trash. Um, you know, just maybe events that might take place out there, there are different open space areas.
It it seems it would be more flexible and nimble, I think those were your words at once.
Could be.
If it were a working group of some kind versus a subcommittee. But you don't think you'd get the commitment?
It would be, you would have to reorganize for every single task that you'd wanna do around town to get a a new group or a different group of people. Or the same group of people even, you'd have to reorganize that whole process. This would keep that process in place, would keep that, those people involved. On an ongoing basis.
Commission management skills.
What's that?
Depends on your commission management skills, keeping them.
Right.
Involved.
Um, cause I I'm a strong believer in the patch, I hundred percent agree with you, you're right, that people get. Get involved with a commission because they were either A, aggrieved at one point, and so now they wanna, um, you know, be on that commission, or they're a single purpose. You know, I call it a one trick pony, I think, you know, I've I've seen it.
They want my project to come through.
Or, you know, I'm I'm focused on this thing, so I'm gonna get on the planning board to make sure that everything is this, and then they realize that. Holy cow, the job is this, and I really don't like it, and you know, they're there for a cup of coffee, so I think. I, and but, and then to get folks, you know, kind of be, I don't, I don't know what the right term is, but to get someone that wants to go and sign up for the courses and get educated and eventually. You know, become onto the Conservation Commission as a full member or what have you. You know, become onto the conservation commission as a full member or what have you, and so I think. I, I, I just, I just wanna make sure that we're do, and if, if that's what you think is the best way to do it, is to form a subcommittee of the conservation commission. I just think you, you don't wanna hamstring yourself at the same time, because then if you call a meeting and two people show up and, and a co- a commission member. You don't have enough to have the meeting and you, and you wanna have maybe fifteen people.
I mean, they don't have formal hearings about different things. They would come together to meet about. Areas of town.
My point is, but once you call it a subcommittee, they're subject to everything else, right?
How many people?
You, you, yeah, you're.
I was thinking maybe seven people.
Yeah.
Just like our, or me, like. That's pretty much what we had before for. Sixteen years or whatever. Um, and it was a pretty active board, you know, they did manage the different areas, some places allow farmers to go and do hay and things like that. So they were, uh, getting those people to come in and take care of the properties and.
Those seven people are not members of the conservation commissions?
One of them is now. Oh, I mean, I used to be, Dennis used to be.
Be overlapping.
I wasn't planning on that, although I would, I wouldn't mind if one of them was. That's, I mean, that is the way it started, conservation commission members were also that board, it was kind of a double board.
Yeah.
A double.
Yeah.
Almost like like management and kind of, right, that's the same group. I don't know why we, we still have the two groups and they, they kind of meet together.
Yeah.
It's not the same.
But I would like to develop a new.
Yeah.
Yeah, but people, I wanna a bigger well to draw from than, oh, this guy came in, cause he, he wrote on a piece of paper that he likes to go hunting, you know, it's like, okay. I'm glad you like the outdoors, I'm glad that you have some interest in preserving the outdoors, but that's not all that we do, you know, I mean.
Right.
That's, I mean, that's how I got involved, so I know that's sometimes where it starts, you know.
Yeah.
But there's way more to it than that.
But sometimes it's a perspective too, is like, I get it, like, if you have someone who's got. A particular interest, but they're interested in the whole ball of wax, that's fine, cause then you can turn, turn to that person, go like, you know, we had that hunting bylaw thing and, you know, in front of us. I'm like, look, that's not my thing, so you tell me, so if you have something that comes in front of you, you can look to that person and go, okay.
Yeah.
This is in, this is your ballpark, right?
Exactly.
Please help me.
Right. There needs to be that training in place. But right now, it's a little bit lacking.
I'd like to think about it. I, I, I like the idea, I really do, I just think it's, I wanna make sure.
I, I just.
It's a good idea, because I think, you know, the, the bench part is great, I just think the mechanics of it, of how you do it. Whether you officially call it a subcommittee or it's a working group and whether it's informal and I, you know, there's.
Yeah.
Again, no opposition, if you have an interested member or you call it an associate.
What if it wasn't ad hoc committee, does that run the same way? Do they need to have?
Yeah.
Yeah.
How many associates can they have?
Well, like, that's the thing, like, if you. And I, you can't have associates on the conservation, if I recall, I think we went to council on this with Mr. McWilliams.
Right, we didn't have associates.
You can't, I think, under the statute of how conservation is comprised, you can't.
Right.
So it was like, kind of, but we use, we have other ad hoc committees, like, like management's one, high speed internet is one, there's a bunch that are just ad hoc committees.
Right.
But when they meet, they have to have, and, and we have like, you know, you could have three members and, you know, a bunch of associates, and then you can make up your own rules for what a quorum looks like too. To ma- to aid in, in meeting, cause the intent is you get together, you discuss certain things and you report back to. Conservation, which is the policymaking board of the town.
Right.
For all things conservation. And you have open spacelands that are under your jurisdiction.
Right.
And then there's other things where it becomes cross-functional, like the OSRP has the R part of the OSRP.
So advisory would fall under the same thing, that's.
And grow, that, that's right, and space advisory.
Right. And, and, you know, and to, for someone that wanted to be involved with conservation. Whether they're, you know, however they wanna do it, even if they weren't a full member of conservation or any of this, but you, you wanted to send someone to go and. Take the training, because you think that they're gonna apply next year to be appointed when someone's term is up and someone's leaving or whatever. Well, puts them in a great spot. I don't, I personally would not be opposed to that, one iota.
Nice, had a nice interview with a young man who was interested in conservation. You know. Doesn't quite understand all about it, but he would be very amenable to being part of that open space, going to those trainings, you know. At, in, he would love to become, you know, educated in what conservation does, so.
For, for authorize such a subcommittee for an eighteen month period. See how they pull it together.
That'd be great. Fine.
I wanna dig a little bit deeper.
Yeah, and we can come back, see if we could come, this is a good discussion.
You know, I mean, this is just an initial conversation anyway, there are many different things that. You know, they might have different responsibilities and things for that they would.
Yeah, and if you could, if you wouldn't mind, to just send like what you think the mission and, and goal of this is, we explained it some of it here, but I think just all of it.
Well, right, I mean, this was just to get the ball rolling pretty much, um, you know. We're gonna be needing to get an open space committee together fairly shortly anyway, to get the new plan, uh, revised plan.
OSRP, right?
Right.
Yeah.
So. Now. Might be good to just get people interested in.
Hundred percent, absolutely. I mean, the planning board's lucky, right, because they have the associate role, it's a joint appointment, but that, you know, that, that's the bench for that board.
Right.
You know, and, um. Yeah, I think it's a good idea, we just gotta figure out the right mechanics to make it work and, and be beneficial, but like you said, if you have someone that. Or others that as part of your, you know, recruiting, cause anybody who wants to become involved and get appointed to a board, you know.
Right.
We should encourage that to serve the town, but if we have to make, you know, a, the minimus investment in them to, to, to go to that training or whatever. You know, we've done that with other boards or even paid positions.
Right. So they make the commitment to wanna go to those things.
It's a two-way street, right?
They gotta show up, right, right, exactly.
The open space report was like twenty eighteen-ish?
The last time it wasn't. When, the last time the plan was, I was. Maybe twenty nineteen?
And.
Yes.
How long was the good one?
It was five years.
Five year.
So it's coming up.
Yes.
Yeah, we're getting there.
It was called an advisory, so.
That's what I don't know the answer.
Yeah.
Even when we did the, the high speed, we had so many people that wanted to be on it, but I'm like, guys, we have eighteen people, I mean, you know. Ten have to show up to have a meeting, so we did members and associates so that we could always get together and meet, and that's an ad hoc advisory. Some committee of, you know.
Yeah.
To advise.
I don't, I don't wanna get into that either, you're right, I mean.
So what is it that we want Nicole to investigate?
Yeah, and we have, you know, we have agendas and minutes and, and, and everything else.
Mm-hmm. So, so what is it we want Nicole to investigate?
I, I have to figure out what exactly I wanna investigate, and I wanna kind of hear back, I, I, I agree with the principle of this, I think, I just wanna hear what's the, you know, the overall overarching goal and. And then, and then we can talk about. Um, you know, I can talk to Nicole or we can all talk to Nicole about what's the best, you know, what's the best way to achieve that?
Yeah.
And, and get what they want done, because I, I think that the premise is good, it's just the mechanics of it.
Yeah, we can do a little peer poaching too, I, I'll look around on the internet and see what other towns might be doing.
That'd be good.
All right, thank you very much for your time, appreciate it.
Next item on the agenda is going to be interview with all new board members. Firstly, the attached list was not attached to the agenda that was posted. Um, so we cannot appoint tonight, but we can interview, unfortunately. The computer cracked out, so I don't know, actually, Bruce. Highlighted.
Hang on a second.
Miss Gill.
While you're doing that.
I think it's quick recess.
Yeah. Yeah, we can. If you want to use, this is what was supposed to be attached, so these are our new people, if you just wanna.
Interviewing anyone.
Chris Boyd.
So.
Applying for cable advisory committee.
Chris Boyd. But I don't have a, it's, it's, it's.
It's, it's people hanging out and.
Cause I'm sitting here, I'm like, well, this is expired, this is.
It's a listen, we just have to.
And we are going to go on, as I stated, our next item and agenda item is going to be speaking with all the new board members.
New applicants.
New applicants are going to turn this over to Ms. Gail.
Just because I have the list and in no order, it's just by border commission. We have Chris Boyd, is he here or online?
He was, he left.
Oh, he left, okay. Chris Boyd was seeking a position on the Cable Advisory Committee and as we know, we have to revive that with negotiations coming up in a year. So we can hold on his, we're not going to appoint anybody today, we're just going to hear from these people. Next, we have Connor Flurry and here he is, I saw him. He's looking for a position on conservation. Sure. And/or the Open Space Committee that you just heard us talking about.
Eric, could you just state your name and address for the record, please?
Connor Flurry, thirty-two Sandwich Road.
So why do you want to be a member of the Conservation Committee?
Just have interest in getting involved in town. I own an excavation company. I think I have a lot to offer as far as that whole set of things goes. Yeah, just interested in kind of broadening my knowledge of conservation and think I own, I think I operate young point of view as far as ideas and new technology and stuff out there and have, you know, involved a lot of the social media and the new stuff, technologies.
And you met with Chris Pratt, right?
I talked about it, it happened.
Okay. All right, and are you willing to work on the Open Space Committee if that?
Yeah, yeah, that's kind of, I'm actually more geared towards that now than I am on conservation.
Let's just know where to get you.
Yeah, I think it's like Chris was saying, like you don't want to rob someone of a seat when, you know, someone's not going to be serious about it. I think what he was saying, like the open space would be a good introduction to it to see how serious people are to bump up the conservation. And I think it obviously a good foundation to of like, just kind of like getting the training and the knowledge and the experience of like, kind of that you can apply that into conservation if somebody's going to make that move.
As you're advertising your social media.
I have, I've seen your stuff online.
Oh, you guys have, oh, that's good, that's good.
Yeah, I've seen you do your work. You did some for a relative of mine.
Oh, really?
Yeah, yeah.
Who's your relative?
Boyd. On Bugbee Road.
Oh, oh, was it your brother?
And my brother was out there telling you how to do it.
Oh, yeah, 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 I found that subject.
Yeah, but that's what I told Chris was that you actually listened and you learned, so it was good.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
That's good.
So you have potential.
Thank you.
Well, well.
No, I'm glad to see a new face in front of us. It's always good.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I know Chris was saying, like, when he was up here saying like how it's tough to get volunteers and stuff, I think with what I do, I can offer a lot, like I can offer my equipment for free for, you know, as a write-off or whatever, not even write-up, but just as, you know, good faith at town. I think with a lot of the projects going on, if it's mowing or moving stuff around, I think I have, I think I can.
Some friends would be good.
Careful what you tell about that.
Yeah.
No, I, I think it's just good to see, you know, young folks that want to come out and help their, their town.
Absolutely, I love Southwick, I want to, you know, I want to help preserve it and then, you know, hopefully help it grow.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Sorry we make you sit here all night, they're short.
Usually people sitting there all night change their mind about what I can say.
Thanks a bunch. And then we have for Conserva-, Open Space Committee, Bill Terry. You were on both. You want to wait until EDC? Okay, we're getting there. Open Space, we had Jen DiPietro. Okay, you were on Open Space as well. Yeah, as your, as an option.
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
But you're more.
I think it's conserving as well.
Yes, yep. Are you still interested in the conservation and/or open space?
Yep.
Because you're already, you're.
But I am part of the agricultural.
Just for renewal, correct?
Yeah, I'm associate.
Yeah.
Wanted to try to see if I could become a member.
Yep.
Yes, my name, my first post.
Yep, okay. All right, and then then we have Sabrina Poehler, interested in the Cultural Council. Here she is.
Hello. You know the routine.
Thank you for seeing me.
You are?
Sabrina Poehler, twelve Third Street.
Okay, so tell us what you want to do with.
Yeah, I'm interested in being on the Cultural Council. I've gone to a couple of their meetings now. I know that they have essentially two big tasks. One is to review applications for grants. That's through the Massachusetts Cultural Council and then they also have an art show in April that they host here at the Town Hall down in the auditorium. Yeah, I mentioned I, I've gone to a couple of meetings of theirs. They seem like a great group to work with. I do have an associate in visual arts, so this is also kind of like in my realm, the other side. So I do have a little bit of a creativity aspect of me. And I have some ideas of my own that I want to ask the Cultural Council to see if they're interested in doing. But first, I'd just like to get on to learn ropes before stumping through and saying, I want to do this.
Okay, did not know that about your visual arts.
Yeah, I studied black and white photography back in the day when it was a thing. Now it's, I, well, this is like real, like with, with a black or white or a black room and you'd have to develop the, yeah.
Okay.
Aging myself a little bit.
No questions.
All right, Sabrina, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, Economic Development, Bill Terry.
Everybody. Could you just state your name?
Bill Terry, two twenty-eight South Loomis Street.
Why do you want to be part of the Economic Development Council?
Lived in towns thirty-something years, self-employed, own my own business for twenty-something years. Eye-balling, retirement, a couple of years down the road, I could have a lot more time on my hands and I'd like to figure out another way to get back to my community. And I think my talents and expertise would be an asset to the EDC.
I know you went to a meeting or two.
Yeah, been to a couple of meetings.
With Mrs. Byron?
Interesting, yeah. Yeah, I'm interested, I'm eager to learn more about what the board can and cannot do and how the state interacts with the town and all that kind of stuff. So it's pretty interesting.
I've known Bill for the better part of thirty years. I don't have a lot of.
You have any questions?
No, and I had the pleasure of serving with, I won't say your better half, Mrs. Terry on the planning board for, well, I wouldn't say better because, you know, it's a fifty-fifty deal. Come on now. I've served with Mrs. Terry on, on the planning board and, and I've known you about as long and I think you'd be an asset to the EDC.
Anything else to say?
Nope, I actually chatted with him.
Thank you, Mr. Terry.
Thank you. And then also for Economic Development, Stephen Roach, is he here or online? Anybody online, Stephen Roach?
I know that he was traveling last week.
I know he did go to a couple of meetings as well. I chatted with him at the Land Trust launch. He's very interested in, younger person as well, been here a number of years, really wants to dig into the community. He did go to a couple of meetings and participated and chat with Terry as well. And I think you, well, you can tell me, us, whether you endorse them or not.
Yes, endorse both candidates.
Well, it looks like we're getting another crack at this, so we could always invite him for our next meeting.
Yep. Yep. And then we have for Historical Commission, Erin Villanueva. Not in the room or online? Apparently not, but she, I know she has also participated in some of their meetings and met with the chair there. He endorsed her, I think you were there, one of you was there when he came and talked, raving about wanting to add her, but he had to wait until we got full appointments. So we can, and see if we can invite her again next meeting. And then we have Jen DiPietro again on lake management. Were you also interested in lake management? This was the application, I think you put in late last year that we carried forward.
Yeah.
So yes, lake management?
Yes.
Come on up and tell.
Have like a top five, Jen, or?
Yeah, well, so I'll explain. Thank you for the opportunity. So I'm currently working on my bachelor's degree in environmental science and all of those. Jennifer DiPietro, sixty Lakeview Street, Southwick. So currently working on my bachelor's degree, environmental science and all of those commissions would be very you know, something that I can give towards, you know, once I finish my degree. I'm already learning so much in the Agricultural Commission. I enjoy it so much with the teamwork that we have. I've been on the Agricultural Commission as an associate for a year now and I've learned so much even just in the last six months with the Open Farm Day planning, you know. So I am interested in, you know, my first choice was to stay on the Agricultural Commission with everyone, but to try to become a member rather than associates. I mean, at this point, I'm not sure exactly the difference. I think, I believe that you can vote more things in and be more part of the commission, but just to be a member rather than associate. Although I am interested in, you know, lake management, I'm at conservation, all of the above. I've learned so much just with talking to Donna at the Calabrese, just what they have to do to even sell produce to a grocery store. All the testing that they have to do, they have to bring in companies, you know, things like that. I just learned so much. And I'd like to, you know, give as much as I can with my knowledge that I'm learning and just time that I have with going to school and working. I work with the Dino Nobel Explosives and I work with waste management as well. You know, hazardous waste. So it's just all encompassing. So just being able to help the town in that way. I'm, you know, I'm in, I'm on Lakeview, my husband is selling his house in Enfield and moving to Southwick. So now I'm more in Southwick rather than going back and forth. But yeah, I'm just, I love volunteering for the town. I love being a part of it and I like to learn more and give as much as I can. I know with the Agricultural Commission, we're working on like newer ideas, possibly having programs for the children in the schools for agricultural. Somehow, some way, we're kind of new ideas for, you know, the new year, things like that. So we're trying to, you know, make it you know, so that children can be aware of the agricultural in the town too, you know, somehow getting a program for that too as well. So little things like that, but.
So they know what hard work is.
Yeah, I'm trying, you know, and I just, I love anything that has to do with the environment and trying to help keep it, you know, just what he was talking about, the open space and trying to keep it clean. You know, I've done audits on the land. I live on Northlake, so you know, with all the things that are going on over there and I've, I've gone kayaking and, you know, done audits and, you know, submitted them to the town, you know, how we can try to get and keep it clean. How we can, you know, come together as, you know, a community and, you know, try to keep our town, you know, clean. That's just an awesome way to have some kind of committee for that too, you know. But like I said, I'm available to volunteer. I've been to probably, I'd say ninety percent of the meetings last year, some of them were Zoom, but you know, do as much as I can to be an active participant and so that's basically it.
So are you also interested in the Open Space Subcommittee?
Okay. I could give them by choices, I guess, I suppose. Conservation was great. So, yep, so we have the Agricultural Commission full member, conservation, open space, lake management. What was the other one? There is another one, yeah. I think that's it, actually, so.
That's your order.
Whenever there's an opening, because I don't know, when I seen online, there's only one opening for the member. And then, of course, our associate members positions are open as well too, so.
Okay.
Mine is expired, so.
Let me just see if you're on the list anywhere.
Thank you. I know you're, when did you come on?
Last year.
It was just a year.
It was exactly a year ago, yeah. I couldn't do the Open Farm Day last year because I had to work overtime, but this year or not.
I saw you there and, and I've seen you at almost every meeting that I've watched on, on Zoom and, you know, you've been a very active participant and, you know. Thank you for coming back to your town. I think it's great.
Yeah, I appreciate that, thank you, yeah. You know, I'm learning a lot and I want to give back as much as I can and be there. And once, you know, I get my official degree, as I, as I go through, I've done, you know, different papers in my studies regarding Southwick, you know, I mapped it out. I use the geographical information system, which I'd love to try to use in the future with.
Yeah, you've been talking about that.
Yeah, so, you know, things like that. I want to give back and, and what I learned, you know, and I'm learning a lot and so, so.
Awesome.
So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Okay, then we have Master Plan Implementation Committee. We have Rachel Dunham here. Or online. No, so we're gonna have to invite that. I don't know anything about that person. Do we have Karen Basha here? Or online? Jessica Taylor. Okay, you had to be one of these.
How are you?
How are you? Good. Thank you for waiting. Jessica Taylor, thirty-one Kungman Road. So I applied for the Master Plan Implementation Committee. I saw Diane's post on Facebook, so thank you, Diane. I've lived in town for a long time. I grew up here, about twenty years, moved out in my twenties and just bought a house here about four years ago. My family's been in town since the mid forties, had different businesses in town. And at this point, you know, I have some time, spare time, I would say, outside of my regular full-time job, that I would like to just get back to the town. You know, I love the town. I love the people here. I love the community. The, I know the plan, the master plan is very extensive and I think it's going to take a lot to implement, so I'd like to help contribute to that.
Is there any particular part of the master plan that is of keen interest to you?
I didn't read through the entire plan yet. You know, the hundred forty pages. I did go through, you know, some of the sections and I, you know, I do think that it encompasses a lot of, you know, keeping the rural feel to the community, which I like. I mean, that's what I liked in growing up here. You know, being able to explore in the woods, but then we have all the conveniences here that are, that are good. So I didn't see a spot in there that like, I would say, oh yeah, definitely, you know, for that part of it, all of it seems good to me. You know, just keeping the natural resources that we have here, but it's also important that we grow the town and make sure that it's sustainable for other generations too. So I think that's, you know, important as well.
What is your professional background?
Right now I work in the aerospace industry, so I manage a trade organization for aerospace manufacturing companies. Two of our member companies are actually manufacturers here in town, so WGI and Beanie Tool.
Diane pretty much covered everything, so I'm sorry. That's quite all right. You asked the question I was going to ask, so.
No. Again, I don't think you've been on a border commission forever or a long time.
No, not in town. And when I saw it, I figured it, I thought it would be a good way to start and get more involved. You know, like I said, my family's been here for a long time. I have as well. You know, we enjoy the town and I felt like I wanted to give back. My father years ago was on one of the boards, he was on the planning board, but that was when I was a kid, so. So no, I, you know, would like, this would be my first opportunity for that.
Great.
Yeah.
So excited that you replied, thank you.
Yes, thanks for posting it. I thought it was a good opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, then we have Marissa Cook Obergan applying for Master Plan Implementation. There she is.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Marissa Obergan, one twenty-six South Loomis Street.
Okay, tell us what you want to do.
Sure, so I was on MPAC, the Advisory Committee for the Master Plan, and I was a very hands-on member. Helped organize the public outreach events that in turn helped us develop the data that we implemented in developing the plan. So I'm really proud about doing that with the rest of the committee members, some of which are sitting there at that table and in the audience as well. So that was really rewarding, but ultimately it does come down to implementing it. This isn't a binding document and I do feel very invested in this plan. I heavily edited five out of the eight chapters of the plan, working with each of the different teams that were assigned to that and just plugging in, you know, important data points that hadn't been added yet, but represented majority views that we had heard from people, from the surveys, other outreach events that we did at Town Hall, at the Brass Rail. So I just feel that between having that hands-on experience, understanding the process that led to this plan being developed and the spirit in which it was developed, the scope that we aim to have and the guidance that the PVPC group gave us as well as consultants, I feel very comfortable with helping implement this plan. My professional experience is also in project management. I work in the product development field. So in terms of working on a committee like this, I feel really confident about leveraging the passion and enthusiasm of new people who, you know, may not be aware of the plan or have read the whole plan, but they're still very passionate and care about the community in town and onboarding them. I have experience with onboarding people through work. And I do feel that I could really give this committee some guidance in its first year of operating, just to make sure that there is an understanding to the plan's scope. I also have a background in finding grants. So I feel like setting the committee up in that first year to also leverage all of the different grants and funding that there is out there would take the burden off of the town of Southwick in terms of funding all these different initiatives and action items that the plan has. So would love the opportunity to help see this plan off the ground and then, you know, build a good team and hand the reins off, because I do think it's important for this plan in terms of its implementation. It's going to be long-term. It's not going to be a one-year thing, a two-year thing. It's going to be much longer term that we give it a good foundation and then have new folks come in and continue building up on what's been previously made.
No, I'm good.
I'm very familiar with.
Yes. Certainly with Marissa on the.
I was the honorary member of that committee, so. Very, very well in tune to what she did on it.
Thank you, Marissa.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for considering me.
Okay, then we have Pam Sclafani. Here she is.
How are you? Great.
Having a good coffee lately? Could use.
Matter of fact, I have.
I'm Pam Sclafani, five Alco Road in Southwick. Okay, so I came before you last fall because I was interested in sitting in the, or in on the EDC and I, I did. And I stepped down from that recently because they really already had a wonderful marketer who was our news reporter today. And I felt like my efforts there were just duplicated, so I thought maybe I could do something else, another committee, another board, something like that within the town. So when I saw your post, I thought. uh, within the town. So when I saw your post, I thought, oh, this might be the, the thing. So, um. Do you want to hear a little bit about my background? I'm, I, I currently own Kungman Coffee. I am also a part-time marketing director for Coldwell Banker in Hampshire, in Franklin County. I only do like five hours a week for them. And, uh, before moving to Southwick about eight and a half years ago, I lived in Ludlow for like twenty-something years and was very, very involved in their community there. I was on the Board of Directors for, um, the affiliated chambers of commerce of Greater Springfield. I was the president of the Ludlow Chamber. I was on the Ludlow Boys and Girls Club Board. Uh, I was a founding member of the Ludlow Rotary, a big sister for Big Brothers, Big Sisters. And I haven't really done a lot in Southwick, and I really want to get back into doing more as a volunteer. So I really want to find out more about this committee, but the thing that interests me the most, um, about this is working with the various committees and helping them to set, um, like a strategic plan to implement their strategies and tasks that have been assigned to them. That's the thing that interests me the most.
And that was my other question. That was my question. What would you like to pinpoint in the process?
So that's really what interests me a lot, is working with the different boards and.
Remember when you interviewed for EDC and were very impressed then and still very impressed now.
Thank you. Good.
Very good. Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any interest.
All right, then we have Gabriella Peterson. Not in the room, not online, I guess. Norm Cheever.
Here.
I see.
How are you, Norm?
I'm just fine. Thank you. Norm Cheever, one hundred Berkshire Avenue. Uh, I also served on the Master Plan Implementation Committee. Want to give you my view of committees as I've served in several communities in New England. And membership is usually made up of either active members or passive members. The active members roll up their sleeves, they dig in, they do research, constantly want to prove the process of the organization. Passive members really don't get involved in the research, let other people do the research and then they'll give them their expertise opinion when it comes time. And, uh, I think you all know that my, my role is active and I'm concerned that some of our committees have a lot of passive members. And that the choice of the people you choose for this committee must be active because they've got to coerce the other committee, other boards to become more active. We're unleashing a hundred and thirty-five action items on multiple boards. I'm concerned that some of the boards are gonna have a little difficulty signing up to do the work. So as you probably know, my skills are in research, data packaging. And if you feel that those skills are required for this committee, I'd be more than happy and honored to certainly answer any questions you have.
Well, we had a chat together and he was the much more active participant. I'm not gonna lie on that chapter than I.
We have the advantage of knowing what he did.
And, uh.
And in, like, management as well and in conservation. If you have a, a history of.
Yes.
Actions. We have the advantage of.
Yeah. I do agree with the philosophy of new blood. I also believe that you need at least one person from the original committee to bring continuity. But that's our decision. Tough one it will be.
Thank you, Norm.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Okay, then we also had Cory Roland, but she withdrew from, uh, the Implementation Committee. And then, um.
Before you go on, I, I want to just thank Cory Roland, because I think she was very instrumental in, in the M, MPAC itself and sometimes keeping us going on the right track and kind of steering us. She had a lot to do with the SWOT analysis and some of the other, um, technical aspects of, of the process of gathering data and presenting some of the data, so.
And keeping track of it.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
Thank you, Cory, for that. I'm sorry she, she withdrew from this, but, um, she has our thanks.
Okay, another new applicant was Connor Fleury again for the planning board, um, but we didn't talk about that. Um. And, and we do have an expiration on that, so if you have anything else you want to add to, to push that, okay.
That's a joint appointment of the two boards.
Correct. And that is all we have.
And it's, and it's five on three, so it's not really a joint appointment at all.
That's all we have for new applicants to consider for new positions.
Yes, um, as we stated.
Have to be next.
That will be.
Better next meeting. We will just discuss those.
Discuss all the.
So we will have the people we didn't see tonight invited back in, interview them first, and then we will do the appointments, just.
Are there any, from that list, I was looking at some of it today, from that list that we've just gone through and the folks that we interviewed tonight, are there any other reappointments that would not be made in favor of anyone we interviewed tonight? Or these would be incremental to those boards or, or filling vacancies on boards?
Well, most of them are.
Right. But, uh.
Um, the EDC, those are vacancies.
Correct.
And cultural councils of vacancy, open spaces new. Um, conservation, there are three renewals if we choose.
Reappointment.
Correct. Correct. And then the capable advisory, we need to re.
We. I think we should talk about that late under new business, because I think we just, we need to reconstitute that, so that should come up under new business, but.
Okay.
The, um, I, so my question is, is it, is any, have we interviewed anyone tonight? And then if there was someone that's term is expiring, that would not, that a new person would be appointed to take a seat that, of an expiring term?
Uh, possibly on lake management. If we so choose. And the other one was historical, which is a vacancy. And, yeah, and that's it. They're very, very pretty much new to fill spots.
Right, so there's not anyone that would be aggrieved that they weren't, that they were not appointed to a new term, their term expired, and we interviewed a new person tonight that we just met tonight and they get put on a board. Correct. That, and then someone would obviously not be appointed to a, a successive, successor term.
On two.
Yeah. There are two.
But conservation and.
And LMC.
And LMC. Yeah.
Okay. I would strongly suggest then that if those folks that, whose term is expiring have the opportunity to come in front of this board as well at our next meeting to, to tell us
Yep.
why they should be reappointed or, or asked for a new appointment in lieu of us just appointing someone else. I mean, it's, it's a fairness issue.
Yep. And just so you all know.
Consider in the planning board in this conversation. No, I think we gotta carry that to a future meeting, because we have to invite you guys in and have, and we had, we had one person indicate interest in the role, correct? And you have someone in that role today. I don't know if, uh, she wants to continue to serve.
Did reapply.
Okay.
She did.
So we'll have to have that
Yeah.
discussion.
Okay, so the reason we can't do these tonight is because the names were not listed on the agenda for the public to know, so we have to interview you tonight, but we can do the appointments the next time we meet. Done.
And I think you should list that I can work with, um, Lisa and Nicole on the agenda, but we can, you should list the particular seats that are
Yes.
are, are open for discussion here.
You want to do that?
Yeah.
Do that?
Yes.
Mr. Boys. Just Cory.
Sorry.
You should really go ahead.
The open space thing, like, gonna be a bore? Is that still all pretty vague? Like, it's just kind of I don't want to, I'd rather do, I guess that would kind of change, like, if it wasn't gonna be a thing, say, I would do it next year, I would spike shift would be into something in fact, where it's going to go throughout, like, staying.
Okay. I, I think it's gonna be a thing. I just don't know what the thing is gonna look like.
What it's gonna be called.
Yeah.
And how it's gonna.
Oh, I guarantee that.
Forget about it.
No, definitely not. It's just a matter of how, like, we talked about with, uh, oh, Chairman, right, like, with the chairman tonight is the mechanics of it. When you start calling something a subcommittee, it ha- there, there are certain things you have to do versus if you want a working group to support certain activities at, at an open space and have a group first, so Finowski's in a group for this, and I don't want to speak for the chair, and especially since he's not here. Um, and then, you know, have the, the, the appointed conservation commission actually make those policy decisions or if there's rules or something to be in, to, to be, uh, put in place, that's what your conservation commission would do. So do you need to have the formality of a, an official subcommittee, right, versus having someone just be, you know, and I don't call it associate because you can't, but, you know, a working group that supports the efforts of the conservation commission and no one's opposed to that, and there's, you know, there's no, no one has any objection to that at all. It's just a matter of, you know, how you go about it. No, I think it's gonna be soon. We're gonna talk about it at our next meeting, I'm sure, under old business and figure out what's the proper direction.
No, we've left certain things hanging. There's no reason to leave it hanging. We should make a decision.
And open space was your first choice?
Yeah.
On that?
Okay.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you all. Our next item on the agenda is to acknowledge payroll and payables warrant. Acknowledge payroll warrant number two thousand five hundred and four, dated eight thirteen twenty-four, and the amount of two hundred seventy-nine thousand eight hundred thirteen dollars and nineteen cents. We're going to acknowledge payable warrants number two five zero five B, dated eight twenty twenty twenty-four, and the amount of eight hundred forty-seven thousand one hundred eighty-eight dollars and seventy-eight cents. Next item, we are going to approve the open session meeting minutes from seven twenty-two twenty twenty-four.
Motion to approve the minutes from seven twenty-two twenty-four.
Second.
Roll call vote, Jason Peron, aye.
Van Gell, aye.
Doug Moblin, yes.
We next, we will make an approved, uh, make the open session meeting minutes from eight twelve twenty twenty-four.
Motion to approve minutes from eight twelve twenty-four.
Is that the last meeting? Eight twelve. I had sent changes back to Lisa.
Subject to those changes, I think they were the same as mine.
As amended, second.
Roll call vote, Jason Peron, aye.
Van Gell, aye.
Doug Moblin, yes.
Next, we need to action, action items. Um, I saw Mr. Anderson here early. Need to review the letter to the select board regarding the old association building from Pacting Facilities Director Russ Anderson.
I think we lost him. Vivian. The letters in the pocket, yeah. You want to fix it? You want to demolish it? Those were the two options.
Yeah, I think.
You want to take it to the slab?
Yeah.
Possibly find a prefab later on. At a less expensive price than was originally quoted.
That motion?
I would make a motion to go with his recommendation to demolish the building to the slab at an estimated ten thousand dollars. And to explore a prefab garage for dry storage later at an estimated cost of forty to sixty thousand dollars.
Ms. Gell, I'd suggest those are two separate actions. If subject to budget appropriation at town meeting, we have the ten grand to take the building to the slab. So if you'd amend your motion to take the building to the, to the slab.
I will amend that to take the building down to the slab at an estimated ten thousand dollars.
Second.
Roll call vote, Jason Peron, aye.
Van Gell, aye.
Doug Moblin, yes.
And.
Could you, at this point forward, could you address these items? I do my. But I don't have the information in front of me right now.
Oh.
Soon as you share.
Yeah, 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 yeah. That's fine. That's fine. All right, so you want to make, so, uh, also make a motion to have, to have him explore a prefab building for forty to sixty thousand dollars for future storage, old storage, dry storage.
I'll second it. That's gotta go in front of the budget.
Of course.
Yeah, so.
But he's got to get the.
Yep.
Roll call vote, Jason Peron, aye.
Van Gell, aye.
Doug Moblin, yes.
Next, we need to approve the invoice number twenty-two from Pioneer Valley Planning Commission for fiscal year twenty-one Southwick Community Assistance Program for five hundred nine dollars and seventy-one cents.
Motion to approve invoice number twenty-two.
Second.
Roll call vote, Jason Peron, aye.
Van Gell, aye.
Doug Moblin, yes.
Next, we need to approve the donation of one hundred dollars to the fire department from Patricia, this, I'm gonna say Besseski, of Tallinn, Mass, into the gift account.
Motion to approve the donation of a hundred dollars.
Thank you, Patricia, second.
Roll call vote, Jason Peron, aye.
Van Gell, aye.
Doug Moblin, aye.
Next, we need to accept the donations to the animal control shelter for four hundred and three dollars and fifty state, uh, fifty cents from Interstate Building Supply and a hundred and seventy-three dollars.
Inter- interstate was a hundred and seventy-three.
Except the.
Tolls.
Four hundred, okay, I'm sorry. For that's a four hundred and three dollars and fifty cents total. Interstate Building Supply is a hundred and seventy-three dollars.
I, I'm sorry, you were correct. It's four oh three fifty Interstate Building Supply.
It's the way it's written. I get it.
Yep.
And, um, a hundred and seventy-three dollars doesn't appear to have anyone uh, mentioned. Uh, so that'll be an anonymous donor, it looks like, and
Yeah.
seventy-five dollars from C Lecky.
I'll make a motion to accept those donations.
Doug Moblin, second.
Roll call vote, Jason Peron, aye.
Van Gell.
Doug Moblin, aye.
Next, we need to accept the FEMA assistance to firefighters grant for the striker, power load, and power lift stretcher for the new ambulance. Chief, did we run this? Chief, was there anything you wanted to bring up on that while you're here?
Just to make the board aware, initially we had submitted the event application for seventy-three thousand dollars. Um, it was lower to sixty-three thousand from FEMA with no explanation why, uh, but it still helps us a couple of times.
Make motion to accept that grant.
Second.
Roll call vote, Jason Peron, aye.
Van Gell, aye.
Doug Moblin, yes.
Next, we need to review and approve the plan for an additional storage container to be installed and connected to the training building, um, what training? One in the.
Fire.
Yeah, I apologize. Um, I put it on the agenda because it was a last-minute decision of, uh, in verification that the container was still available. So I have just a, a very crude colored drawing of what it would look like, as well as a photograph to give you some perspective of where things are. Um, and again, I apologize because I wasn't sure if the container was still available. I didn't want to waste the point of time.
Oh.
Again, this is just another metal, metal conics box, um, same shape as the larger ones that are already there. So there are three large boxes, one smaller box. Um, the blue represents the, the ground level, the green is where there's actually two stories. The red represents the location of where we'd like to put the new box. The new box is actually a donation from the, uh, rec center here in town. They have a box to look to get rid of, so they made it free of charge. It's just upon us to get it up and out of there and get it positioned in place, which we can do with interstate towing. We've done that, used them before. We'll replace the, the second story box. So because it's town property, just wanted to make sure the boards are okay with this presentation and, uh, with the addition as, as proposed.
Are those right on the asphalt?
It does. It's, it's right in the asphalt, yeah. So there's no, no disturbing, uh, the ground or anything like that. There's already a whole stone bed area out there um, with the intention of, you know, there could be additions that we put on for this, so. That's the plan.
Right. Any other questions, Dan?
No.
So then I would be looking for a motion to approve the plan for the additional storage container. To be installed and connected to the training building.
That moved.
Second.
Roll call vote, Jason Peron, I.
Thank you, I.
Doug Mogan, yes. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Next, we need to review the request from Conservation Coordinator Sabrina Poehler to host a star party at Sofinowski Preserve. Sabrina, you wanna come up or?
Eight, but well. I'm tired. Um. We write a letter to you guys.
We did.
I can summarize. Um, well, last year I tried to do a star party with the Springfield um. Stars Club, and we got rained out. We had three days, two cloud dates. Um. Rained the entire weekend. Uh, I was contacted by the Springfield Star Club's um public relations, relations. And they would like to try again, and this would be. October eleventh, which is a Friday with a with one cloud date of October twelfth. Um. They'll bring the equipment. Drive it up to the back to the hill. Um. And then.
Same as last year.
Same as last year.
You'll have volunteers to help park and.
I'm hoping to get, I'm hoping to get volunteers. Um. I did ask the commissioners in our last meeting, and. It looks like some of them may be busy. But.
It's holiday weekend.
Oh, yeah.
October, is it? Move. Okay. Um. Yeah, so I gotta, I I I need to work on on the uh ones, but this is essentially.
When the stars are there.
The star, yeah, the star, the star, yeah, yeah. Stars will be there, the planets will be there in Nebula, you know, they'll be there, hopefully if there's no clouds. Um. So I guess this essentially is permission to uh utilize a property after hours. This is gonna be dark time. Um. I believe last year. Um.
I think. You got some kind of waiver, right? Didn't have them sign a waiver or something last.
Not for stargazing, not for the one event, one night event. That was for the.
Wanted to go out there and do his own stuff.
Yeah, he wanted to go out by himself um at night for stargazing. We didn't have a waiver for this event. Um. From my understanding, from my conversation with Springfield Stars Club last year, is that they do bring like red lights to help illuminate the walkway. The red light doesn't interrupt with the stargazing telescope. Um, so. I I believe they're going to bring those. So it should be safe to walk up. And the access point, I believe there we're gonna walk along the road. Through um the back way in between, well, there isn't a sign on the right, but to the left of the of the main pond and then up the hill. Oh, cuz the other walkway is a little treacherous at night. It's rocky.
Any other questions, Miss Wong?
No, we approved it last year.
Yep.
Uh, rain.
Yeah.
I would say subject to the same thing as last.
Yeah. To uh approve the request for the use of the Sofinowski Preserve for the star party.
Second.
Roll call vote, Jason Peron, I.
Thank you, I.
Doug Mogan, yes.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Next, we need to.
We got two people that I put up for the whole meeting. If you want, take them out of order.
I wouldn't have a problem with that. Ms. Gail, do you have a problem?
No.
Before they quit and run out of here.
Tail of throat.
Okay, so we're going to the.
Yes, we're gonna go to, we're gonna skip ahead to old business in regards to the um call force members, uh Kristen Nutting and Robert Barron to the Southwick Fire Department. Come on up, guys.
How are you? Sure.
You don't have to stand. Mr. Mogan?
Oh, no, I go I go last on this.
So. Why do you want to be a call force member?
Um, I want to uh help Southwick and continue my EMS and fire career.
And that which consists of. I mean, we looked at your resume all day, but.
What's happened, sorry?
We I we looked at your resume previously. Um. What is your experience level?
Uh, I've been in EMS about twenty years and fire for about.
So little experience.
Seven.
Very good.
You live in town, sir?
I live in Jacoby.
That's right. We we had that in front of us last week, and we're trying to remember where. Where you were in it, yep. I was checking it.
What draws you here?
Um, actually, some of you are, some of the members. Of the department.
You're very good recruiter.
They're good at recruiting. Yes, indeed.
I have nothing to do with it.
No, I don't have any other questions.
I'm not even gonna ask the usual gateway question. The guy sat through four hours of this meeting so far. I'll second Diane's move.
Uh, I will make an appointment to appoint Robert Barron to the call force.
Roll call vote, Jason Peron, I.
Thank you, I.
Doug Mogan, yes.
Thank you, Robert.
Thank you for sticking it out.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, the more the better, thank you.
Miss Nutting, could you come on up? Hello.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Did you learn a lot tonight?
I did, actually. It was like the first thing for me ever sitting in one of these. It was long.
You'll never do it again, right?
Never, never.
We don't have a lot of law hearings.
So you should attend a planning board meeting.
Hmm?
She should have done the planning board.
Yeah, this is just a warm up for a planning hearing.
I got my pass on that.
Good idea.
So why do you want to be a call force here in Suffolk?
Um, honestly, it's always been my dream. So I'm nineteen years old. Um, it's always been my dream to be a firefighter. I've always wanted to help people. I think it's always been a calling of mine. Um. Yeah, I just, I I was either gonna go into the service. I didn't. I was gonna go into the Air National Guard for firefighting. At first, I um was with a recruiter.
That a good answer?
It's the right one, yeah.
Checking.
Well, Air National Guard or Air Force.
I was just waiting for that.
Would have sufficed.
Well, yeah, that's for the firefighting. I was with the recruiter for a while. Um, I ended up not going that route, so I was like. Well, I feel like it might be easier for me to join like a house. Like firefighter thing instead of going overseas where it would be, or I could have been at Barnes, and I didn't really want that. So, um.
Could try wrestling.
Because I could have, but um.
I'm just.
It's all past the post, but.
Um, yeah, and then I kinda was like, I was scared at first to do it, I'm gonna be honest. I was like, there's no way, like, I'm so young, I don't know how to do this. It's just always been a dream of mine. I uh threw an email out there. Someone got back to me, and here we are, so.
You seem very motivated and interested, and that's a very good thing.
Yeah, it's been my dream. Um, there's even an interview. I went to the tech academy. If you look up the interview of it, there's me stating that.
What's your other experience?
Um, with firefighting, no.
No.
Oh, um, so actually, I went to the tech academy, and I was in collision. Um, I worked at police collision for a while. Um, so cars, I know about cars. I know about working on vehicles, putting them together, taking them apart. I uh one top of my class. Um, yeah, I worked at police. Um. I worked in the shop. I worked in the paint shop. I worked honestly all over police. I did um. Working in the office, just working the front desk, answering the phone to a CSR, um moving to trying to learn to be like a GM, like under a GM there, actually. Um, I kinda wanted to learn every aspect of it, um just because a person likes to be the best at what I do, so I wanted to learn everything. So, yeah. That's my best.
What are you doing now?
I'm a CSR ADOE pile. And it was my stopping point before starting my life career, which is this, so.
And I'm sorry, I don't have your resume in front of me. You you live in town now?
I do, yeah. Um, thirty seven Tannering Run, Suffolk.
I recognize the last name.
Do you?
Yes.
Which which family member?
I don't know. But I.
Me too. I just don't remember from where.
Anyway.
It's not a bad thing.
No, absolutely.
Could be me. I played a lot of sports, so it was in the newspapers. That could be me.
And I do.
And modest. Uh, she sat through the meeting, so so what's standing between yourself and being a member of the call force? In the town of Southwick? What one thing?
Is standing between me?
Between you being, sitting there, or being on the call force in the town of Southwick?
I guess I'm being approved to.
Exactly.
Okay, so I will make a motion to to appoint Kristen Nutting to the call force for the Southwick Fire Department.
Second.
Roll call vote, Jason Peron, I.
Thank you, I.
Doug Mogan, yes. Welcome aboard.
Thank you for coming.
He must have watched some other meetings.
Yeah, I know.
Welcome, sir. Thank you so much.
All right, next we will go back to our item, actual items, and we need to approve. The Feeding Hills Road bid contract to Palmer paving.
It's an amendment, right? And then there was an amendment to it. Yeah, let's still heading in. It was right here. Go on, you know. No, that's not it. No, there was a award, and then he mentioned.
It's there.
August twenty first, so the bids. There you go. Right.
Put in a bid of two hundred ninety six thousand dollars, three hundred eighty fifth, three hundred, two hundred ninety six, three hundred eighty dollars and fifty cents. Andre material put in a bid for three hundred eighteen thousand five hundred dollars. Northeast paving put in a bid for three hundred sixty seven thousand dollar, three hundred sixty seven thousand four hundred fifty dollars. And Warner Brothers put in a bid for three hundred ninety eight thousand six hundred fifty dollars. The little bidder was Palmer paving. Well, Mr. Here's Randy. Oh, there he is. He's on. Randy, there you go.
How we doing?
Good, how are you?
Good, so I, as the chair just read off, we opened bids for Feeding Hills Road paving projects, so we're looking toward that contract. And I did also have a side note that the bids were pretty competitive. Uh, they came in a little bit under our budget. So what I'd like to do is extend the paving a little bit further down Feeding Hills Road, if it's okay with the board, and utilize a full amount of the budget that was allocated.
That's. Primary route in and out of town, and I heard nothing but people want that paved. And it's, you know, the this shape it's been in is is also a. Safety issue as well, so. Randy, how far would you be going?
To uh Red Oak Drive.
Seven.
The original, the original.
So from Red Oak to the um just past Calumrees.
Yeah, I think that was the previous one, right?
It was gonna be to Crapes.
Crapes, this comes a little.
And this goes a little bit further.
To run.
So I.
I would be looking for a motion to.
Make a motion to approve the Feeding Hills Road bid contract and to, is that two separate? The award to. Palmer paving. And then to extend it to a Red Oak Drive. In accordance with the original budgeted amount.
Second.
Roll call vote, Jason Peron, I.
Thank you, I.
Doug Mogan, I.
Thank you, Randy.
And he's still on.
He's still on the next one.
There's. Next, we need to approve the Bungalow Street Construction Amendment Request with Fuss and O'Neil.
So this was done in a couple phases. Um. Initially, we're gonna do just portion Porsche, a portion of Bungalow Street. Uh, we ended up uh combining two years of grant funds. Into one project, and we're gonna do all of Bungalow Street. Uh, what we had did not do, it was budgeted, but uh we did not add all the construction phase services for the entire project.
Okay.
So that's the amendment number eleven for sixty one thousand dollars that we're talking about?
Mm-hmm.
Just looking for the amount and making sure that's correct.
So.
So motion to.
Yep, I would be looking for that motion.
Approve the amendment request number eleven for sixty one thousand for Bungalow Street.
Roll call vote, Jason Peron, I.
Thank you, I.
Second and I.
All right.
Thank you for paying attention to.
We need to appoint an advisory board member. And a designate to the Franklin Regional Transit Authority.
Uh, there was a question on that letter.
Yep, it was a typo.
Okay, so it is the current period.
It is, yes, July of twenty four to June of twenty five.
Who was the previous?
Carl.
Oh, good. I know where this is gonna go, right?
Sort of mine, that's why.
Where'd you come from?
I recorded it just there. Thanks, Randy.
Sorry.
Um. Yeah, so we just, you just, you know, kind of formality, appoint uh somebody to Ferta. Um. I will say that, you know, now that um. Lisa's down there, you know, she's getting. Familiarized with everything, and they really do need more buses. There's more programming that they'd like to do. There aren't enough buses. People sign up. Be, you know, it's first come, first served, so there's a whole slew of people that don't get to go on these programs. So I am gonna work with her and with Ferta. I've spoken with Ferta already in. I mean, um. PVTA, uh, we don't have any transportation in town, so they wanna maybe work together. I'm getting a couple of stops in town. I had seen a few times as I'm driving up. And they were driving up to Southwick, and they take a right and go to Agewam, so there's, there's no public transportation here in town at all. So they're going to do some background work and see where there might be um some needs. Um. Uh, Lisa has, you know. Seen some some needs in town where she is now, and then also being at, um, you know, a couple of the meetings that I've been to lately. Where I've given my number or please come and see me, my door is open, and that has been a concern of some of our residents in town, too, that it's. You know, not quite walkable, not a lot of walkability, um, but there's also no public transportation, so.
What is the? Demand response riders? For Southwick, there's just the cover sheet that's in here. Do you know what that is?
You know, so honestly, this is out of Greenfield. And they. Primarily um serve that area. They don't come around here a lot. I I I don't know.
It says for Southwick.
Right, it does say for Southwick.
And and the reason I'm asking, I went to a. Conference in late April. And they mentioned that there was this pilot program in Southwick. For on demand.
Ferta, with Ferta?
Yes. But nobody knew about it here.
No, and you know, okay, yeah, so but there was somewhere else that I had seen, um. Somewhere else I was looking where it shows that, you know, if there's. They serve Southwick, but yet all of their their zones.
Hmm.
Are not in town, right? So I I think that we need to do some outreach to them to see. To Ferta. Maybe, and and why, you know, and I'm like, why are they, why is it Franklin Franklin Regional? And not Pioneer Valley, which is.
I just asked Doug that.
So I I do know a a senior executive over at PB Today TA that I reached out to, who he then initiated the conversation with Ferta. And I said, you know, they are our transportation company for a senior center. I don't want to step on their toes, but I. You know, if they're that far away and all their zones show all up in the Franklin region, then maybe we could incorporate something in our region with PVTA.
This is the answer to that question is the age old question, and I think it's probably worth the phone call is to ask Carl. Because I'm certain, I know or was told the reason. But it escapes me at this moment, as to why. Like we have a Ferta vehicle out here, and it's served by Franklin Regional Transit. I I don't remember the basis for it. I'm certain it was under Carl's tenure, and I'm sure he would give you the color as to why that happened.
I think he had told me, and I don't remember.
And it was, and I'm sure, yeah.
Shame on us for.
I don't remember.
Actually, I just said I'm not gonna ask.
Yeah.
Well, I'll certainly reach out to Carl, and then I will also do, you know, some work with Ferta, and so I have to reach out to them.
That was good. So maybe that is their pilot, and they're looking for guidance from our local.
Yeah.
You.
Yeah, okay.
For it, I don't know.
Good problem.
But I just wanted to mention that they did talk about a pilot. The state announced it at that meeting, so. But I mean, it could take three years for a pilot to come in, I know.
I still don't understand why they have a picture of our fire station on the back of their brochure.
Oh, yeah. Cuz it's Southwick, cuz that's their Southwick guy.
Southwick guy.
Oh, got it. Oh, got it, okay.
I wonder how many people up there go, why are we? All right.
Well, and that was, that was what stemmed it, was that, you know, and Lisa just was like, oh, you know, we have these great trips, and if you, if you, you know, the second it comes out, if you don't call within ten minutes, it's successful, you can go, so, you know, we, we should be able to accommodate more of our seniors, so, yeah.
Right.
That puts us at the end of our action items.
So I'm sorry, do you wanna just appoint me to that advisory?
Yes.
Why don't we do that? I'll make a motion to appoint Nicole Parker to be the advisory board member for FRTA.
Second.
Roll call vote, Jason Peron, aye.
Dangell, aye.
Doug Morgan, aye.
Sorry, one more thing, it says and a designate, I don't know if it should be Lisa or if it should be Nadine. I, I, I just don't know that Ferta's always only going to serve council on aging, so it would, might be more appropriate to have a designate.
Was it, it was always just Carl, or was Carl and, uh, the former occupier of the Senior Center?
Lisa?
Right there.
She might know. And see her.
What?
Was Cindy on that Ferta Advisory Committee?
Was who on there?
Sullivan. Or was it just Carl? I know you talked to Carl about it.
I think it was Carl.
Okay, so.
Never mind, we don't.
If we have to come back to it next week, we can make that subsequent appointment.
Okay, sure, I'll check.
And we'll, we'll wait till Lisa's not paying attention again, and we'll appoint her.
Okay, where are we going next?
Basically, we're on to, we're done with all that. And we are going on to new business. Um, as far as new business, um, I, I'm gonna bring it up, we talked about it, I think if, maybe before Miss Gill was on the board, maybe not, um, employee insurance costs. I've started doing some digging into that, um, I've asked Nicole, we'll see about it, um. I think it's an issue we need to address, I think it's been brought up before. Nicole, can you explain what we've been talking about?
Um, just the percentage, I think, um, the percentage that employees pay versus with the town pays, which is fifty-fifty, which is, um, on the low end, probably the lowest that I've seen, um, and, you know, you talk about employee retention, et cetera. Um, that especially in the public sector, um, you know, we don't necessarily, we can't keep up with those competitive wages like the private sector can, but what we do offer is, you know, a great benefit package, so, you know, working for a municipality, the state, you know, the, the, the public agencies can offer better, um, you know, fringe benefits. Uh, so I haven't necessarily delved into it, I've done it a lot in my other jobs, uh, working with the insurance, um, but I really feel like we could probably, you know, be, um, creative in this, maybe the percentage then versus raising points for the towns as far as structuring the, um, the co-payments, et cetera, that the employees pay, so we could probably do a really good, almost equal comparison if we look at that, um, you know, that structure versus just the fifty percent, and then keeping all of the co-payments sound, you know, there's several different options that we really wanna talk about with the insurance company, and maybe even exploring other health insurance companies that provide um, insurance to municipal agencies, just to kind of look around and see, that was something that Jason had, um, had, had brought up pretty early on when I, when I first started, it was one of his goals to look at.
It was one of the things that's been brought in, several kinds by the employees.
For, for taking, for, you know, helping out the employees.
We've talked about it as well, and, um, it's something I did a lot in my career. And suggested even going outside the municipal insurers. And seeing what the open market.
Yeah, okay.
And there you can play a lot more with tiers, contribution rates, um, different levels of coverage based on risk, on the individual's risk, and give them some options.
Right, so if you have a young person who's just starting out.
Yep.
You know, they, they might have, um, a, a high.
A high deductible.
Deductible, but, you know, they're not gonna really go to the doctor, and you know, you think, so they'll choose that kind of plan, but there's just options that really don't cost the town more, it's just a way of manipulating the way that the plan works.
Yep.
Actually, when I was digging through some of my materials at home, I came up with, um, former, um, town clerk. Michelle Hill was the package she gave us, maybe the last year or the year before, and she had presented some numbers, and um, really, like I said, what brought this to my attention was obviously some of the employees have been asking, you know, and they've, you know, they've said, no, this is, it hits, you know, I, I, I think I've mentioned before, I have a family member who works for the, the town, and I didn't believe him when he told me what he paid for a family plan, if compared to what I play, uh, paid in my professional capacity north of here, when I looked at it, I'm like, oh my god, it's like, I was like, wow. Um, and I, me and Nicole have talked about it. I think there's only two other towns that were on Michelle's list that are in the fifty percent range, pretty much everybody else is sixty-five, you know, but it's something, if I, you know, I've heard from our employees and we talked about retention and keeping good people, and, you know, when they brought it to my attention, I said, hey, there's nothing wrong with talking about it and looking into it.
I, I said, you know, being creative, you could even look at pulling other towns into it and making a bigger pool.
Or the school, right?
Yeah, yeah, the school towns.
Lots of. Okay, yeah. Just options to look into. You know, it wouldn't be until next year, so we've got time.
Yeah, so lots of ways, lots of ways to be creative.
Um, yeah. I mean, it was recent as last year, um, we had done a little bit of legwork, exactly along the lines of a, uh, HD uh, high deductible health plan, right, and it really is offered by the, since the Hampshire Trust that we're with now. You know, that's been going on in the private sector for a while, and you alluded to the school, so remember that whatever we do, uh, first of all, we have to go to town meeting, and you gotta get it approved to go, to change that percentage. And, and then the other side of that is the school, because the schools will, they're, they mirror what we, so.
Well, unfortunately, we don't mirror what they have, so, uh, there's a little bit of, uh, of, of the defense there.
In the total benefits unit.
In everything, in all of the benefits, right?
Right.
What the schools, what the schools get, they're completely separate, 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 separate.
But they're, they're fifty, the fifty-fifty part is, is the same. And so if that were to change in town, the schools will be, but I, I don't think ten seconds would elapse, so you would have to, and being, you know, almost ninety percent of the school budget, eighty-something percent, that would have dramatic impact on the overall budget and financial position of families, so just keep that in mind as you go through the gyration, so we did.
We're hoping it's gonna be lower premiums.
Oh, I hope so, and, you know, we've had these conversations, you know, folks have stopped me, and, and, you know, said, you know, look, you know, I, I just got, you know, we just got a new deal on this contract is this, and then my insurance went up this, so it chews up a good chunk of the, of the increase, right, or more than.
Oh, more. Seven percent.
Right.
But just also to be clear, we have been, and, and I'm not opposed to saying this, please, don't get me wrong, I think if we can figure out a way to, to do this better, we should always.
That's why I brought it forward.
We've also been successful, and we have recruited folks from other towns to come here, and some of the comp that we paid offset the dealt with. It's not in every case, and there's other people that have been here a long time that are not as affected in that way, but we've hired, say, department heads from neighboring towns, brought them here, and their pay in their MOA is reflective of the fact that they're going from an eighty percent town to fifty percent town, and therefore their pay is elevated as, so.
I'm by no means saying our compensation is unfair.
No, no, I get it, I'm just saying, and there's, you know, there's all kinds of advantages to working for the town of Southwick.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
You know, other than those, but, uh.
The other thing that I've, it's not really a new thing that I've come up with, but I was doing some research, and I remember this when, um, I lived in Westfield. What they've started to do, I'm, this sewer thing is crazy. I, I've reached out to Randy, I've asked Nicole to look into it, you know, that whole pow- powder mill project was designed with the sewers in place. I, I, I don't wanna mandate anything, but I hate to say this, but, um, I think it's come to the point where I don't know whether it's a zoning thing, a bylaw thing, that we need to start really looking into the areas that can still be serviced by the sewer.
The existing.
Starting to, for lack of a better term, say, you have to hook up for this, you know, Title V fails, and once, if we can get this to go through, and I think it was kind of, the way I'm, you know, I've researched what you said about uh, why it was shot down, and, and I kind of think this was, might have been presented the wrong way. You know, what a lot of people don't realize, especially the folks that are on it, you're already paying for it twice. You know, and, you know, that should be a motivation for these folks to say, hey, we need to get more people on here, you know, the only way this is ever gonna work is if we have more people in the sewers, I mean, we've, I talked about it. Um, I don't know if I brought it up in the meeting, but the American Inn, whatever agreement they've got, that should go away. You know, I don't know how, how it would go, but, you know, it's, it, it's time, I, I, I don't know when that happened.
You've got chickens and eggs, so here's the thing, I, I believe most of the areas that are sewered, people are connected to it, and if they haven't, then they're gonna be connecting imminently. In zoning, actually in the residential, um, guidelines, they have to put a dry sewer line.
I did ask.
However, those expire. They, they literally will rot in the ground if they're not wet. So when a applicant applies to the planning board, they ask for a waiver of installing the sewer lines, cause, and there's plenty of subdivisions in town that have useless dry sewer lines, if you ever came to them with the sewer, they'd have to dig them up and put them back in again. So that's, so that's counterproductive. So the chicken and egg is, every development that's come in that could connect to the sewer has absolutely connected. Depot, Rails End, the new place on Depot, they're gonna connect as soon as they can, believe me, if, if we already had a sewer line at the American Inn, we, they would have connected a while ago, Winfield, instead of spending a million dollars, they would have put it in. Problem is, we have to get there with the sewers to get those connections in in the first place, so like I said, it's kind of a chicken and egg. And then one thing I did forget to mention last, uh, our last meeting, when we were talking and lamenting some of this, you know, the powder mill project was, was turned down at town meeting right along the Congamon Project and a third project. We then had to subsequently spend one million dollars to connect the schools to the sewer, so there's a high-pressure line that runs right across from the schools across the field um, down to the rail trail to connect, because we were under a consent order with DEP as part of the school construction project that uh, former superintendent signed a sub for without us really knowing about it, I didn't mention his name on purpose, um, that obligated the town to, well, town and the other two for, are eighty-seven percent of one point two million dollars to connect those, uh, schools to that, instead of, and so we basically bypassed Fernwood, Birchwood, all the, all the woods over there to, to get those connected. So it was on top of the six hundred thousand dollars we didn't spend, you know, that was already spent on the design over there. I'm with you, I think we need to get, you, you need to bring the sewers to the people, and then you can say you have to connect in a certain amount of time, or you have to connect.
That's, yeah, that's what some of the.
I get it, and the other side of that.
I'm just looking at all the different ways.
Hundred percent. And the argument that's also made is, once you, there's a certain equivalence now of connecting to the sewer and reconstructing your system for Title V, right, there.
They used to be extremely skewed, it was like.
But now they're not that far apart, right?
Super far apart.
You're also signing yourself up, and what we have to be careful here is, you were, we were a little bit draconian two weeks ago and said, rates are gonna double, triple, quadruple, we don't know yet, who would sign up for that? Without knowing the, the upside or downside, no pun intended, to their rates on the sewer rates, you're, you are going to get a sewer bill for the rest of your natural life at that point, once you connect, cause it's, you know, flow in, flow out.
Yep.
Um, so you have to be careful with your rates, cause if you make it, like I said, draconian, you, you will not get the participation, and we still have town meeting form of government, you need to bring a sewer project in, you need to get it past town meeting, you need to, and then you need to construct it, and then get the rate payers on it to pay. So there's a lot of hurdles to do it, so we can't just threaten, and I use the word mildly, I don't intimate threaten, but you can't just say, we're gonna, you know, without some assurance of what rates are gonna look like out in the future, hence why we have this subsidy that we are, we're continuing to have to fund, given the number of users, you have to have some certainty in your rates on, on a go-forward basis with some reasonableness, like we have with water rates, rates, water rates are gonna go up, but they're not gonna double or triple in the, in the near run.
I know.
I understand it, but you, you, you have to be careful, because you just, you run the risk of jinxing any potential future sewer project for all the time, if you, if suddenly, you know, your household, a large household expense could double or triple. So we have to keep that in moderation as we go along.
We would have to illustrate.
Well, one of the things that I also spoke with Ms. Sherman, Nicole about was, you know, with the different programs that are out there as far as conservation and whatnot, if there were grants up between these, like, EverSource and stuff, was, does with their energy programs, could we go out there and find something to help offset this, and I know it wasn't popular what I said, and I don't like the fact of the way it's been paraphrased in the social media. I, 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 I do care, but it's just a problem that we need to address, I mean, I looked at those numbers that Randy gave us, and if we don't hit certain parameters, it's gonna double, it's, I mean, or go up thirty-three, forty percent subsidy, again, I'm gonna say it, and I know you don't agree with me, Diane, it is not fair to the rest of the town to continue to pay that type of subsidy. I know, I think we should still pay something, but that, that number has to go down, in my opinion. That's, that's just my personal opinion, so that does mean, unfortunately, the rates would have to go up, but I'm trying also to find out different ways to hook up to the sewers to help bring those rates down, you know, and, uh, I'm hoping, you know, I've talked to Nicole about USDA, you know, there's, with this push for conservation, green efficiency, okay, federal government, start ponying up some money, cause we're not gonna be able to do this on our own in some cases. And like you said, one of the biggest drawbacks was it used to be five or six thousand dollars to do a hookup. It's now ten or fifteen, and like you said, a new system's twenty-five, so the, I mean, positives outweigh the negatives, but are you ever gonna see it? Depending on, I, I, you know.
And I think the town learned its lesson, like, and seen it a, a bunch of times, every town learns their lesson in phase one, right, phase one, we came through, we, we own the grinder pumps forever, we did all the on-lot, right, and it was part of your betterment. Then we realized there was a huge disparity in the betterment. Some, some houses are twenty feet from the street, some are six hundred feet from the street, and up, and downhill or uphill, and so now we come to your property line and stuff, and then you're responsible for the on-lot. That's part and parcel, US RDA loans, they were very, you know, very good rate that we got um, and a high subsidy, those, and those diminished from phase one into phase two, now they're almost non-existent, we have to, you know, we should probably, you know, we have a sewer implementation committee, you know, they've done yeoman work in trying to put together some future thing, we probably, when we need the finance committee, we should probably bring the sewer implementation committee back in here and say, hey, guys, you know, let's put our heads together, and then also, you know, some additional, you're right about the grants, I don't.
Is it gonna be enough? I don't know.
Well, but it, it's also, um, it's interesting, the EverSource, everyone, I saw a lot of people, myself included, ice-watered when they got their EverSource bill, right, but if you take a look at that, there's ginormous subsidy in your EverSource bill, right? It says, oh, it's the tree-cutting charge, and then they, there's a big one. Public policy, there's a fifty-dollar energy conservation charge, a green energy charge, and the energy conservation charge is the thing when you call to say to get your free insulation and light bulbs and extension cords and all that stuff? That's the fifty dollars on my bill and your bill and your bill, it's not free, obviously, nothing's free, so, and the same thing with US RDA or or any of the other government backed.
It's not free money.
It's a subsidy, it's just a federal subsidy instead of a local subsidy, cause it's your own tax dollars coming back into your community, or, uh, you know, deficit spending by the federal government to, to come back in near town, but.
There is one other thing I wanted to address, I, I talked to, and I've actually done some research. There is a way to charge those sewer lines to maintain those seals, you can actually charge them with whatever, I don't know if it's, uh, just plain water, or some sort of combination of formula, but there is a way to actually like, for lack of a better word, dead charge those things, so they. What?
The dry one?
Yes, you just fill it, basically, what, they, they do it in other places, I've done the research. Um, they, cause that's what's going through it anyway, so they charge it, and it may, it maintains those seals.
I get it.
Or, or just maintain their.
But I guess my question is, is, there's a new subdivision going on, uh, where's that, Mister Chairman, Mort Vining, Mort Vining? Okay, so go ahead, put dry lines in there now. I don't see, we don't have water up there.
It would have to be like reasonably figured, that's why you said the sewer. That's why you said the sewer implementation committee probably needs to come back.
So sewer implementation committee, um. Nicole was gonna talk about this in her thing, but we're on that topic since you brought it up. The joint meeting with the finance committee, Thursday nine, five at six P M. Are you available? And then can we invite the sewer implementation committee in time to join us? Sorry to take that off your report.
As of now, yes.
Six P M, sir? I don't see any sort of conflict.
So let's count on that. And see if we can get the other guys in as well.
Okay.
Thank you for your flexibility and throwing that in. And someone, you guys, you'll at least allow invite the other sewer.
Sure, I don't have anything else. Sometimes, I know you said, I don't know how you read it, sometimes I. That's about it for me on new business. Let's go.
Something really quick, um. David Dean Delory wanted me to let you know, Doug, that there is six miles. Yeah, you had asked a question, six miles of the linear park. And including the right of way, it's a total of forty acres of land mass.
duly noted. Thank you, David. Thank you, Miss Gail.
There you go. That's all I think I have for you business.
I don't have any new business. I wouldn't, um. I'll come to it under our own business.
Yeah, I think so. Mine's coming on.
Okay, um, Nicole.
Yeah, um, thanks. So typically I would have a report to you um within this packet, but I was late and I apologize. Um, and I, and some of it is old, and I'm going to, I'm, I'm waiting for Jim to be putting a. Little tab up on my, you know, the page that goes to administration and goes to my information. So anybody can look up at the town administrator reports, I mean, chief administrative officer reports. Anytime they want for every, you know, two weeks, just to see what's going on in the, in the, so this will be up eventually as soon as Jim can get me that link. Um, uh, so I'll just go over really quick because it is getting late and I know we have a lot, a lot more work to do. Um, that we, uh, Nadine, we've, uh, uh, she has, uh. Done the interviews for assistant to the select board and the C A O and the D P W office manager that. We've narrowed it down. We think we um have got the candidates and can bring them to you as soon as they're ready through Nadine. Um, the joint committee with finance, that joint, joint meeting with finance committee, um. Doug and I attended the convocation, convocation today at the Southwick Regional School. It was really inspiring. It was really uplifting. I think Su- Superintendent um Willard did a great job. She also had the Secretary of Education in for a um, another uplifting message and just to get the staff ready and. And excited for the new school year, and that was really, really nice. I really enjoyed it, um. I haven't been to a convocation like that, so it was, it was more, it was more toward the staff than it was. Just all of the information that you need and, and you know, the technical things that they bring in, you know, the first day of the year. So that was really nice. Um, I'm also going to be on this um special advisory committee to the school committee. Um, and that, you know, just to try to assist in the municipal way to be a good partner with the schools. Um, you know, whatever, whatever kind of help we can give to the children of the community for their academic year. So I'll have, I'll be a little bit involved in that, certainly not policy or anything like that, just being able to bring back the information, things that they're doing throughout this school year. Um, uh, one Lieutenant Taggart brought me this memorandum of, uh, of agreement between the. Um, between Southwick and the police, through the second S R O, they had to change the hours. So in the, the, the second S R O is gonna be seven to three thirty, and currently in their contract, they don't have those hours. So this is just a very short memorandum to include those hours for the second S R O, but it has to be approved by you and, and then signed by. You know, approval to have Jason sign it. Early voting was Saturday?
Haven't gotten there yet, so, alright.
Early voting started Saturday. There were a total of five votings from nine to five. It's very unfortunate that they're making us. Do these, you know, these new voting laws, but it, it is what it is. We have to keep the girl, the, the people here and keep it open and, and here you go. Sometimes, sometimes she told me they had zero, so they're just sitting there, just what we have to do. And I think that's it. Other than uh, the Z B A in need of some rules and regulations. And Diane put a letter together that's in here if you want to discuss that. Um, I can also facilitate this and bring it back to you. Um, there's just one more thing, and then we gotta go back to the Z B A, but the November fifth election day. Uh, there was talk about closing town hall to the public that day because of the amount of voters and. I, I don't necessarily see a reason to close town hall. I do feel like there's gonna be a lot of traffic because it is gonna be a big election, but. The, you know, our cars are here in the parking lot. It's. And they, they're going to be, they're going to be directed into the, out of turn or wherever they are to go vote. Um, so I don't see it ne- necessarily messing up with our day to day, other than the traffic. And I don't know how we alleviate the traffic if we're out here anyway, so I don't know. Uh, this was Christie's recommendation was to close town hall.
Staff always parks on the basketball court. There's at least two police officers here on a detail in the street, in, out. And uh, you know, sometimes the senior center. If, if the, you know, may elect to restrict their activities that day to limit the traffic.
Yeah, they won't have anything that day.
Then I think then we as, we should stay open.
I do too.
Okay, very good. We have mail and voting waiver.
That's it, that, all I need is this year.
Cause I was a part of his board the last presidential election, so.
It was busy. And it, it's always busy on presidential, and it's steady, and it'll be crazy at five to seven.
Or you can come in and nobody's here with you.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's waves.
In the morning, you know, early, early, when they first open, it's very busy. People go to work. And then people coming home from work and during the day, it's kinda, you know, just.
And we close at four thirty, so they're coming in five to seven.
So we're gonna go back to the memorandum of agreement for this, between the town of Southwick and the police officers coalition. I would be looking for a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement that changes in the S R O hours. And allows the chief, the, to shift based on operational needs of the department.
For the one, not both, it's for the one.
There, there are two separate shifts. One of them exists at seven forty five to four fifteen. The other one does not exist currently.
Okay.
Are they both going to be able to be shifted by the chief? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, this is, this is the. This is where the second officer, not both, will be on this new shift. So I'll make that motion.
Second, we'll call vote, Jason Perron, I. Doug Moblen, yes.
Oh, you want me to sign here?
And then, and then the Z B A with the rules and regs, um. I'm sorry, it was late season. You got to really read this.
We can come back to it. Come back to it next time.
Okay, next meeting. Okay, great.
It'll be all business, never next. Perfect.
That was it, Nicole?
That's all, thanks.
Nadine, anything?
Uh, the new. Um, executive assistant to select doing starts on September eighteenth. With the fall goes well, and the new assistant D P W. Assistant D P W office manager, not assistant, D P W office manager. There we go. Starts on the sixteenth. And.
Subject to an interview and appointment by this board.
We discussed this.
I think the only thing that I thought we would bring formally. The bringing them in to formally introduce and have you give them their appointment, but not, I mean, we, we wouldn't be bringing in a bunch of people for interviews. Is that what you mean?
Normally, uh, in, in past practice, I've granted a lot of moving parts here, so. Is the chair is granted the authority to hire. And fill a role for anyone under a department head. Department head would come in front of this board for.
This is what we discussed, right? I made that decision. I just, I, I, I.
Sorry, I got out in front and I'm, it's nine. You're right, you're a hundred percent right. You've already approved it.
Yes.
Fantastic.
And uh, the. The other position that I got kept getting stuck, the assistant D P W director and the. Manager of Buildings and Grounds are posted internally now until Tuesday of next week. We'll see if we get any internal.
So, uh, moving on to old business. We need to, I already did that, never mind. We need to, next, we already did the first two that are on our list, and we're gonna go on to ratifying the library employee union contracts. So it didn't even make motion.
Uh, motion to ratify the library employee contract as we negotiated it.
We'll call vote, Jason Perron, I.
Thank you, I.
Doug Moblen, yeah.
Next, we need to ratify, oh no, nevermind. What, what was the status on that, Nicole? I know when we talked earlier, there was.
Nothing. Oh, fire is not complete, okay.
Chapter ninety road decision, I believe we already did that, did we not?
I thought we had.
I believe we can.
Unless that discussion was the bond that Doug had asked for uh, to be carried out here.
I'd like, that was, I was gonna bring it up under old business, cause we have not come back to it. I'd like to carry that as a separate item, separate item, the chapter ninety for this year's.
So we can take that off of this. For next meeting.
What do you wanna carry? I'm sorry.
Uh, we don't wanna carry that, anything, we just, Mr. Moblen's gonna talk about the road bond thing.
Oh, the road bond.
What I wanna do is take the chapter ninety road decision off.
Okay.
Of old business, cause we already dealt with that.
Yeah.
Um, H C H. That's what I thought, but I was, now somebody changed a word. H C A for cannabis retailers, Diane.
So I sent to the full being version with my suggested insertions. And I think you recorded that they had a copy of that. It has not been reviewed by town council. They haven't really reviewed anything I've sent on this to date, as far as I can tell. They. Uh, have a couple others. That are in front of the commission now that were rejected. For particular language that they put in, which we're not inserting. And you can see the, the reds that I inserted are basically just protections for the town or. Closing. A gap in a few missing words. Um. We can go with this. I can send it to town council one more time, say, if you agree. This is what we would like to give to our candidates for their attorneys to review. And the worst that can happen is, is a section gets rejected, cause they don't like that I said ninety days. And they might want a hundred and eighty. It would mean it would come back to us to correct and go right back. It might cause a small delay if they don't like.
I believe the language allows it to fall back into the chew, does it not, or it was?
It, it gets answered. The ones he gave us as examples, um, they'll responded to right away. So we can go with this. I can send it to him if you agreed with it.
I have not had an actual review.
Okay, none of the insertions I have in here are the C C C niggly conditions.
No, we talked about this, you know.
It is their template.
Yes, just with our protections added.
Correct.
Um, so I guess, so we'll need to review it, so we'll talk about it next meeting. Carry that on next meeting.
And if I, I'll get it done and get it back, so that if. If there's nothing substantive, then I can go to Laura. I'm not looking to hold this.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. So if you, if you don't have a problem with it.
Yeah, I'll just say.
And you don't have a problem with it, you can give Nicole authority to, you can send it then, to Ben, and tell him this is what we're looking at.
Sure.
And uh, we'll go with that if you have any interest.
Alright, North Pond issue updates.
No other, no updates other than the incidents seem to be, you know, getting smaller and smaller, less and less. And we have task for committee tomorrow.
Right, appointments, process and status, as we know, we gotta carry. The actual appointments to next meeting, yeah, those that were listed. Mister Moblen, the high speed internet.
So we met last week. Uh, brief update is, we did review some of the. Some of the assumptions we had made under our initial financial modeling were somewhat erroneous. Some were very accurate, so it was a mix, but we had Whip City come in. With some uh firmer numbers around some of the actual costs. And some of what they've experienced in other towns that are also mutually served. There's some, um. Additional. There's concern around the, the take rate or how many people will take it, since we are, you know, a, a served town already by uh, an incumbent. How many people will take it? And, you know, you, you, the rate. You know, price elasticity of demand, if you raise the rate, less people will take it. So you have to find that delicate balance of what's the rate? That will cover the bond. Um, and what's the rate that, and also cover the expense. Um, and get a, a decent take rate. So. Um, as I mentioned to this board at our last meeting, um. We need to take, I, I don't know what information I need to bring back to this board. In order for us to move forward and either commit or not commit. We have not spent. Overly significant dollars, but once we take the next step, we're all in, right? It's gonna be, you know, the, the, and I can, I will have provided for you next week, um, a packet. Of information, we've got the build out costs, we've got all the other filing costs and so on and so forth. Um, and it's a lot of money. And, but once we start to spend even the ARPA allocation we have right now. Um, without, and, and nor the bonding authorization we have, we can't stop. We have to go all in and finish the project, or it'll look like the sewers.
Um, yep.
So, no kidding, right? You know, you'll have very few people on a system that's gonna cost, you know. Six to eight million dollars for no matter what you do, forget wiring the rest of the town.
And who's gonna be responsible for that?
Right.
Difference.
But, you know, we, the numbers we saw on the. Well, the number.
It's gonna be on the rate payers.
Correct.
Correct. And, and, you know, you did look, there was, we even had, there was a discussion about that at the end of the meeting. And so if you watch the tape of that meeting, it's, it's worth it, cause they did. They alluded to it in one other town, they were looking at that, they were, we were plus or minus like fifty thousand dollars. That's how close it is, depending on what you do with the rates and then what you do with the take rate.
Down with a different.
Like literally of net income or a net loss of fifty thousand dollars. Um, you know, on a, you know, a twenty million dollar, and that's estimating high, twenty million dollar project, that's very small. So you, you got to be very careful, but if you take that net. And then divide it across the town, not that I'm proposing to do that, it's seven or eight dollars, right? But like I said at town meeting, you know, everyone that falls for that's just a cup of coffee a day argument, right? We'll all cup the coffee to death. So. We need to come back, the high speed internet needs to come back to this board. With, I think the Westfield dump, what, Whip City fiber numbers. And a rec, you know, this, and a recommendation from high speed, or even just a joint meeting of the, the ad hoc, your ad hoc subcommittee. To give you that information for this board to vote. And then if we decide to go ahead, then we need to figure out the next step. Um, to kind of formalize that. Subcommittee, and basically with advice of council, probably forming municipal light board, such as it is, to administer the high speed internet. Cause right now, we've got, you know, a few members and associate members. We talked about that forum issue earlier, right? So that we could meet and advise the select board. But, once we get past this financial piece, we've done all the work. You know, that subcommittee has done all the heavy lifting, um, of, you know, working with, for the design, the spec. You know, that subcommittee has done all the heavy lifting, um, of, you know, working with, for the design, the spec, the money. Um, and the budget, and now that, but it's really the select board who's the author, you know. The, uh, executive authority to decide whether we take that, that leap into the chasm of, and we start to spend. And go and do it, and we have the full applications are submitted, we submitted most of the insurance certificates and all this other stuff, but. Once you. Start that process, now you're in, you're in for the big money to start wiring the town.
So you have a packet, you're gonna.
We will put together that act, yeah, and we're gonna meet one more time, and then we should, you know, I think we should bring that committee back in front.
You mentioned that, and I was gonna say, we should have them come in front of us.
When will, when do you think we'll have what you're gonna provide?
Uh, I'll, I'll forward you, I, I meant to bring it, and I didn't, I'll send you the Westfield, the Whip City numbers, and by all means, if you would, please watch the last. HSIC meeting, you were, you were present, so.
Which one was that?
Last week.
Okay, that one I didn't watch yet.
So, it was very informative, I, you know, I much appreciate the Whip City folks. Um, you know, they, they've got numbers, we also now have a non-disclosure in place. So there's some additional numbers that can be shared that are not. For public consumption, because it, it infers some internal costs that. Are competitive in nature that we don't have to share, all the other documents that were submitted for budgetary planning are, are very public and everyone's seen them. Um, in daylight, but to understand the basis of those numbers behind that, there's some, some proprietary stuff, but, um.
Okay, so we'll get that in a day or two, we can absorb that.
Yeah.
Before we meet again, okay.
But I would, you know, we, we're at that point where we, you know, it's either, we, we.
Next meeting, have yourself.
Yeah, I think we should have, yeah, and I think we, you know, I, my gut tells me we're in good shape.
So, we would have the, Nicole, can we put that down, we want to. HSIC.
Yep.
Committee in front of us. To discuss this.
All right, and you have finance at that last one as well.
Yes, thank you for reminding, we did have finance there. The, the chair and the vice chair of the finance committee joined us for that meeting to kind of. Just have their take on it there, I mean, I'm not gonna speak for them, I don't think they had a ton to. To say other than, you know, what we said before was, we don't want this project to be a burden on the taxpayer, it should be paid by the ratepayer.
I think the key selling point's gonna be competitive, the rate that we're, we're gonna be able to, depending on where we end up. I think, right, general consensus I've heard out in the public is, they think it's a great idea, but. Then there's, you know, what you said, I don't think too many people will watch the meeting. And, you know, because the people, there are people that have come to me and said, I just watched this, and this is, like, what's we're gonna talk about? So, so, old business, uh, sixty-one, sixty-one A, have we gotten anything back from town?
I spoke with Ben Coyle. And he says, and actually, I spoke with an MDR attorney too, who said, I can't give you legal advice, you have to talk to your own attorney. And has never, uh, um, had the situation come up. Good for what I'm asking, but what I was asking was, the way that the sixty-one A, um, is written, is if you're, if you're gonna purchase it. If it's gonna purchase as a farm, we can buy it as farm, we can also assign it if we want to. If we, if it's going to be a conversion, and they're changing the, you're selling to Home Depot. There we pay full market value, and if we assign it, they pay full, full market value. Um, no towns. Towns typically don't do this, Munson almost went through with it, but they didn't in the end, um, you know, when, when what? Uh, using your right for refusal and taking, taking and buying it. Uh, you know, the issue always comes up with municipalities, as Ben said, for the funding, so, you know, you don't. It's not something that municipalities put aside for, uh, you know, just randomly buying land. He did say that the statute provides exactly basically what the, um. The committee requested you to, uh, adopt. So you are completely covered by the statute, and to add convoluted language and more, um. More policies and procedures, you know, the town can do with it, what they choose, it's not necessary, it's covered in a statute.
So we don't need to burden ourselves with another policy and steps.
That's, that's right.
It would be just appoint you to be the point person on any of that.
Follow the statute.
And follow the statute, so we don't really need to adopt.
No, and MDR told me that he doesn't know of any other towns that have adopted something special or different. Because it, it's literally covered under the statute, the state statute.
So we cannot further complicate what already exists with a bunch of forms.
That's, that's basically what I'd recommend.
I'll disagree.
I don't either, after all that, I don't either. I went back through it all, and it's, it's like, it just pulled a lot of that into another pile of paperwork.
I mean, there's no sense having, there, I mean, there is sense in having the flow, I appreciated the, the information. We already kind of had the process, and it always, wasn't always executed flawlessly. And even under the policy as delineated, would never be always executed flawlessly, and a lot of times. It's the landowner or the buyer. That didn't follow.
And that was the thing we.
The process says it exists, and then, uh, we're closing Tuesday, you know. How do I get the right of, you know, how do I get this done, and, you know, we, sometimes we just say, whoa, wait.
That was the thing we talked about, if it's not, if it doesn't comply with it, she sends it right back, we don't try to make it fit. It didn't comply, it's horrifying, it didn't comply, send it back.
I'm fine with it.
So, I mean, I'm just suggesting we just take it out and hold business.
And, and we designate it as point person.
But it's already done by statute, I don't think you have to designate anyone.
Oh, I know, it doesn't come to.
Done by statute.
Well, I would facilitate it, but it says notify the town, we want to designate her to be that. You will always get the refer, right of first refusal on your packet though. The, oh, I won't sign a right of first refusal. Just, just to make sure that it's complete and ready to come to you.
Anything else, I mean, I'm sure that noticing, noticing the town is a. Is a legal definition, whether that has to get clocked in at the town clerk's office.
Absolutely.
And you just send a memo that says, hey, anytime you see a right of first refusal, send a copy to the CAO, yeah, that's fine. But you, it's not like it's a.
Okay.
I'm not trying to, you don't have to say that this is what you have to do, because it's gonna come, almost all notices to the town come through the town clerk. We get sued, we get, you know, a letter, we get this, gets clocked in by the town clerk, this, because that's how, that's.
So, so we've got town council input.
I, I think.
Leave it alone, take it off, yes. So the T-Mobile hometown grant, unfortunately, I printed everything off and ran out the door, as far as what we were presented at the Park and Rec. Um, meeting, um. It's a, the total amount of the setup for the projects minus the, um, the actual. Internet hookup and, uh, month service fee. Comes in at the number that the, the grant would cover, there is some requirement that there, if there's a, doesn't have to be completely. It can be completely covered by the grant, so I, I, I confirm that, um, because I wasn't a hundred percent sure on that.
No sharing.
We don't have to share, but they do want us to identify, which we kind of already have in place with CPC in a way. Um, a, another, a different source of funding, if there's some possible runs, yes, so, um. He just, like I said, he just sent me the stuff today, I printed it off and, yeah, I ran out the door.
So it's. Ready to file?
And I, I have all the information, I've got to get my. Two or three shareholder or stakeholders that.
Okay.
Are gonna write their letters, and then I just, you know, unfortunately, it doesn't save online, I actually have to save everything. As similar as a Word document, and then kind of plug it in, but, but it's basically minus my stakeholder letters, it's just ready to go. And then we're at the master plan.
And that's gonna be next week anyway, nine, nine.
Know my notes. Oh, aggregation update. A, we actually got something very positive. Um, they, Nicole and I got correspondence, and both of us are like, this sounds positive. The way I'm reading it, I said, so Nicole sent an email out to Denise while we were talking, and before we even got. Done with our conversation, she confirmed it, so, you know, they talked about, there's these applications that have gone forward, we gotta take care of them first. Well, they've been submitted, and they're now letting us to submit ours as well, so, there's a, I don't know what the timeframe is gonna be. But it doesn't sound like we're gonna have to wait a hundred and twenty days to put ours forward, and. Um, I'm gonna get some more positive information on that, and, you know, between me and Nicole, talking to Denise and DPU, the DPU sent. Uh, was it Colonial Powers, was it their council, got it back to us? And said that the DPU is now allowing, and I'm hoping, and if this is a result of, you know. Uh, Representative Baldiga, Senator Marks, I even reached out to Senator Velez and a few other people that I know. Uh, and said, hey, this is what's going on, you know, I know you're with the Senator Velez, I said, you're not our guy anymore, but, you know, there's. Strength in numbers, and they, I, I'd like to think that's what caused it, but, you know, there was a lot of, there are several other municipalities. That were very upset, that were supposed to be reaching out, so I'm hoping it was strength in numbers, or they just realized that they made a mistake in the way they set it up, so. Hopefully, this'll go to, uh, I forget the next step, but it basically just has to go through. Process and then be approved, and then Colonial can start shopping for a, a rate for everyone.
That's good.
And that's the update on that, that was the only other old business I have.
I didn't have any of mine specifically, but I was wondering if you had any news from Southfield on the.
Uh, you actually was just talking about Mr. Cheever, uh, outside, um, they are still hung up on the voting member. And as I said, I don't even know if we can do that, uh, they, they, you are allowed to do it. In same state, I did the research, it's based on what the two towns agree. But, um, they have agreed to every other aspect of that agreement that we sent, and they, and we, they, we talked about. But they are hung up on a voting member, because they feel it will give them a better voice, I tried to explain to them. You know, why, Mister, because, did they finally give you, Mr. Cheever, since you're here, did they give you an actual voice on their board yet, or you're just kind of there?
Kind of there, and occasionally I can get a word in.
So that's what I recommended, I said, if there's any chance of this working, I still think it should be a liaison. Direct, but with full debate, full discussion, and in a may, you know, an official, like, I don't agree with this type of, I said, I. We're still trying to determine the partially elected, partially appointed aspect of this, we're still waiting on all that. And I could sit down, I said, I don't know, so I just spoke with Mr. Cheever. Uh, me and Mr. Mall have a great working relationship back and forth, I can call him, he can call me. I'm gonna have him say, hey, can you sit with me? And Norm, and, you know, have him fully explain what he runs into. Because that would be a, you know, a give and take, you're gonna allow Norm on your, kind of, if we agree to this. He now has a voice too, I mean, I understand where they're coming from, where they feel that they're not. You know, the taxation without representation, and they don't get enough for what they're getting, but like I said to him, I said, we wanna make this work. Otherwise, it, it's just gonna turn into a nightmare, like it was before there wasn't an original LPP, so.
I, I still feel like they have it with their LMC members.
I am not opposed to.
That they have those people there, and they do contribute.
This is what they want, I'm just telling you that, I mean, I, I, I would not have a problem, they, they let Norm be a liaison. Met, however small that may be, to their comm. And they actually have listened to.
Is it because they have a person in mind?
No. They said, when, what they said is, well, when you have an expiration, you know, you know. Just come to us and, you know, we'll, we'll put somebody, I don't, they didn't. This is what their, his select board is hung up on. So, um, again, I don't have a problem with what they want as far as liaison and what we want. You know, but the voting member, I don't think that's a possibility, I've tried to explain that to them. But I wanna, I'm gonna continue to push on this because.
I don't think I can convince myself to vote yay for that.
Um, where do you sit? For the liaison, it, it's, it's just a liaison, uh, this is the way I look at it, it's a liaison that's got a voice. And that's what they want, and I can understand that, and this is a negotiation, that you wanted me to negotiate agreement. But try to do this, we have to get some give as well as them. There's, it's a give and take process, if we're not gonna give them anything, we're gonna end this right now, and. We're gonna let them deal with the chapter ninety-one process, and we are done with it. And then it's gonna go back to the harbor master and the police trying to enforce this, where they're gonna get. Criminal, the fines, and they're not gonna pay them, and there's nothing we can do about it. That'll be, what becomes problematic is now, after a certain amount of time, you're gonna have a criminal complaint, you're gonna start causing criminal cases. If we decide to follow that up with the police and the harbor master. That people are now gonna, if they don't show up for court cases, they'll now have warrants, so now we've caused a creation, an even bigger problem.
Tell him to put exactly what he's looking for in writing, and what he thinks that person is going to contribute. What voice they're going to, what matters, they're going to voice an opinion. Or a vote, if he thinks it's a vote, exactly what he thinks it's gonna be, open.
Sir Morgan?
I don't disagree, I, I, I don't see how you constitutionally put someone from Southfield on, I get, but I'm not putting you in an opposition.
To be honest with you, I, that portion of it, I agree, I don't see a voting member ever.
I don't, I don't see any, like, it's no different than, you know, we have folks come here from Connecticut all the time and give us their opinion. Where they come to a, a, another meeting of another board and, and, you know, they're, they're allowed to. You know, other boards, how they decide to run their meeting.
They can have public.
They can have public comment, there's all types of, you know, I don't.
That can bring issues.
I'm not gonna weigh in, at this point, I think that, you know, you've been designated to come up with the agreements, and it's gotta be worked out. Um, and subject to ratification of the agreement, but I think there's a legal, you know. All the legal piece of having someone that's not a resident serve on a board or commission in a town, that has jurisdiction in a much wider space is problematic at best. Um. And, and like I said, the, the, and the alternative, the alternative you described, sounds way worse for the Southfield resident. Than not having representation on the Southland Conservation Commission. Going through the chapter ninety-one process, even the smaller process, but then facing the prospect of being fined, and then. Have it turn into a criminal complaint slash having a warrant, which, I mean, that's, that's a little far, but okay.
If you don't show up for.
I get it, but all of those things, right, and.
Correct.
Versus having, you know. Formal representation on the conservation commission, and it seems to have wider impact on the Southfield residents than this one, one piece. So I think that that's something to. Discuss, but.
But, that's why.
The hour is growing late, I can't wait till we get back to meeting once a week, so we get home before midnight, um.
And that's where we are on that.
If we've beaten this horse to.
And I'm going to go with Mr. Cheever and I, I'm gonna make an appointment, sit down and really straight, you know, stress this.
If you want, you can reach out to Winchendin. Who is also a great pond. Massachusetts Great Pond, they're on the border of New Hampshire.
Yeah, but you're in two different states.
That's exactly what we're talking about.
Well, no, what I'm saying is, you've got, New Hampshire is in Connecticut, and they're gonna do things differently. That's what I'm saying.
It's still, it's still the Massachusetts town.
Here's what I'm saying, I don't disagree with the no voting member.
Justing, see what they do with their conflicts.
I will, I'm glad you finally, I will see how it goes, so Winchendin.
I believe it's Winchendin. I will check it, I believe it's mentioned. I met her at MMA.
Okay, cool. And that is that, so now, we have to do the other part. We are going to be going in, oh wait, you have to adjourn. Oh, I'm sorry. Into our debate, I'm sorry.
That?
I, that was, that was my question.
So. I see Sage is still on, I just wanted to thank, uh, all the volunteers. That came out in the rain for Open Farm Day, it was a great event. Um. And, you know, looking forward to next year as well, very well-run, very well-staffed. Great job, and we, and I got to run into every, just about everybody. I ran into Miss Gail, serving ice cream.
When I got there.
You were there early before when you can.
Anyway, it was great, and it was, uh, uh. Nicole mentioned the Convocation Day, which was great. Uh, Jennifer Willard does a good job with that, it's not like, you know, this is bring your lunch, and it's a dollar for this, or, you know, these are the books we're using this year, it's kind of a. A rally to start off the year, and then they get into all the, the, the stuff, but to have, um, Patrick Tutwiler. Um, Patrick Tutwiler, the Secretary of Education for the Commonwealth, uh, direct appointee by the governor. Um, in attendance to to lead that, um, shows a lot of support from. Um. From the department event to um the superintendent and our school district as we continue to move forward. Um. I want to personally thank Kyle Scott, I don't get a chance to thank him enough, and he probably is is a uh. On the complaint side of more things, but I reached out to him a few times over the last couple of months with constituent type. Issues, and he's been very, very responsive and very, very um prompt in his response to them. Um, the next item is, and I'm trying to be as brief as possible because the planning board chair has been very patient. Um, I do want to carry on the agenda either as a direct appointment um with finance. Um, or for discussion at a future meeting as an agenda item. Um, the concept of of having a significant road bond, uh, multi-year bond to. Uh. Play a little catch-up on some of our paving and road improvement projects that need to be. Attended to, we are not covering the gap right now with the the funding, even borrowing, you know, a million or two here, here and there. Um, each year, and I think we need to take a better look at that as a, you know, and look at the infrastructure as the asset that it is. Um, and finance it over its life. Um, in order to take a significant chunk out of the backlog of work that we have. So, Mister Chair, I'm requesting that we add that as a future. Um, maybe it's early October, but it's probably got, if you are going to do it, it has to go to the ballot box ahead of town meetings, so. We're not gonna have a lot of opportunities for elections, you know, much before that, you know, to get on a ballot, I don't want to do it with the presidential, I don't know if that's the right time or whatever, but. We want to try to get all that figured out. Uh, last two things, um, one, it's an event that's near and dear to me, I'm. So glad to see this very well-intended every year, um, is the nine-eleven ceremony that's being held at the fire department. Um, in about two weeks, obviously on nine-eleven, nine-thirty in the morning at the fire department. Um, usually a great turnout by Southland residents and. Thank you for the fire department and police department for coordinating to put that on, and then on a lighter note. Um, the hose, badges, uh, celebrity. Fire department versus fire department softball charity game is September twenty-first at Wally Park. Um, encourage everyone to come out and root on your favorite team or just root on both teams, that normally gets seriously hurt. And, um, it was great, it was a great inaugural event last year. A lot of businesses have stepped up to sponsor, it's it's a cha- it's a charity event for a great cause. So I encourage everyone to come out, for they'll have raffles and prizes and other ways to. To support the charity, so please come out. And. That's it for me.
Nicole, anything old business?
No.
Maybe. So.
Stop being so wordy at these meetings.
So we are now gonna go into executive session. Make a motion to go in executive session pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter. Thirty A, Section twenty-one, two and three. In chapter two fourteen, section one B, Labor Council Litigation Matters and Strategy for Collective Bargaining with Police Union Coalition. Hire I A F, D P W, non-union staff and clerk and union U P S E U. Um, Nicole, we discussed this, so, and I spoke with Nicole. You do not have to read all of this, just the items that we are going to be going into, so. As the chair, I must declare, we have to make sure, where's the one I want?
The one you want is number three, but you're gonna have to read the backside too, so just, I would just read the whole thing, and and. And we'll put the right statutes on from now on, exactly what we're.
Just those individual ones, so we're not, yeah, so we're gonna move to go into executive session to collect, possibly collective bargain. Bargaining sessions with non-union personnel and to not reconvene in open session. Chair must. Move to go into executive session to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel and to not reconvene in open session. Declare that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the body and to not reconvene in open session. Section three, move to go into executive session to discuss a strategy with respect to collective bargaining, and the chair may move to go in the executive session. To conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel and to. Not reconvene in open session and move to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to litigation. And that the chair declare that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the body. Do not reconvene in open session. Chapter two fourteen, section one B, a person shall have a right against unreasonable, substantial or serious interference with their privacy. The Superior Court shall have jurisdiction and equity to enforce such right in a connection therewith to award damages.
Move to go into executive session as declared.
Uh.
Right, well, yeah, well, I second the motion, we'll call all Jason's lines, hi.
Bang, go on.
Doug Moben.